With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you everyone, it pleased me see you. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to welcome back to the council chamber Elder Walter Cook, who has been an elder in the Aboriginal community for more than 20 years. He's been part of many committees in the city of Hamilton both and is well known for his teaching and guidance that he provides to countless individuals throughout southern Ontario. He is employed at Deaua de Des Niasis Aboriginal Health Centre where he is offering a variety of traditional services and has lettuce and prayer and the traditional smudging ceremony here in the council previous. So Elder Cook, welcome back to city council and please step up to the podium. Thank you.
Could we stand please? Great Spirit, we come to you this evening and we give thanks for this wonderful day you've given us to enjoy, to walk on Mother Earth. We give thanks for that. We give thanks for this time you have given us to meet here at the council chamber to discuss certain situations for the city. We give thanks for that as well and we ask you to guide the council in a good way with a good mind. We ask you to do that for us tonight. We also ask you to allow us to remember why we're here tonight, to lead the city in a good way. We ask you to guide us in a good way and be with us in a good way. We ask you now to be with us as we talk about the Aboriginal people here for a few minutes later. We give thanks for that too. We ask you now to be with us as we move forward. Thank you.
Walter, thanks once again for joining us here today and we'll have something further from councillor Pearson in just a few moments. Madam Clerk, oh by the way, members of the public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the city of Hamilton and temporarily archived by the city's website. Other individuals in the media may also be audibly and or visually recording this meeting. So Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Under correspondence item 5.2, there are three additional communication items to be received and under item 5.9, there are eight additional communications to be received. In addition to that, noted as 510 is correspondence from Jane Lowry and Bill Hilson respecting item nine of the planning committee report 13-009 to be received. 511, correspondence from the Hamilton Jewish Social Services respecting the present funding level for the elderly person centre to be referred to the general manager of community services for a report back to emergency community services committee. 512, correspondence from the CRTC respecting expanding fibre optic cable in rural areas of Hamilton to be received. And 513, correspondence from the Hamilton Conservation Authority respecting the permanent truck use ban on Kenneworth Axis to be referred to the Public Works Committee. There are four added notices of motions this evening. 8.1 from councillor Whitehead respecting fulfil the promise of home care. 8.2 from councillor Marula respecting demolition of City Motor Hotel at 55 Queenston Road, Hamilton. 8.3 from councillor Johnson respecting PFOS from respecting the Ministry of the Environment Response. And 8.4 from councillor Marula respecting temporary appointment to the Police Services Board. And finally, one added item under private and confidential respecting a personnel matter regarding an identifiable individual.
Motion please to approve the agenda as amended. Councillor Pearson, councillor Parkridge, all in favour.
Aye.
Members of council, any declarations of interest? Yes, councillor Powers?
I have a note of conflict of interest in the grant subcommittee report which is coming through the AFNA committee today. My daughter is the executive director of an organisation that benefits from a grant from the city.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
Yes, I have a declaration in 5.4 of correspondence which involves the taxi industry.
Any further declarations of interest? Clerk duly noted. Ceremonial activities, and this is from our business appreciation awards, Pungetti's musical instruments, recognition for years of service. I'm going to ask the ward eight councillor Terry Whitehead to join me at the podium. This evening we have the honour of recognising a family owned business which has operated in the city for more than 55 years and I'm going to call Mark Pungetti, owner of the former Pungetti musical instruments on Upper James and his mother Elena, to join myself and councillor Whitehead at the podium for a presentation of an honorary business appreciation award which reads as follows. It is with mixed emotions that I write this letter. It certainly doesn't seem like more than half a century that the Pungetti name has been synonymous with music in this city. Between the two locations, first on Barton Street East, then on Upper James, it makes me wonder exactly how many lives that your family has touched in our community. And particularly, I can only imagine the immeasurable contribution Pungetti's has made to Hamilton's youth over the years. And being a musician myself, I truly appreciate how much you and your family have enriched our city. In fact, as an accordion player, and there's one in my office, I was impressed to learn that your father came from the home of the accordion in Cattol Fidardo, Italy. And the letter concludes, "On behalf of the citizens of Hamilton and city council, I want to offer you my sincerest appreciation for your commitment to our city and to let you know that although the Pungetti name may be gone on Upper James, it will not be forgotten." Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had a personal experience in a number of ways with Pungetti. They're great corporate citizens. In fact, whenever there was a fundraiser by the parents' council at St Catherine's Yenna, they stepped into the void and provided gifts and donations to contribute to the students', or sorry, the parents' association. The other experience I've had is, and many, many of our youth have had, is they provided an opportunity, afforded an opportunity for many of our youth in this community, not only to purchase great instruments, but to provide lessons. And certainly, my daughter and my son were benefactors of the great teaching and lessons that was taught at Pungetti's. I was kind of disappointed when I saw that they're retiring and getting out of the business and I can say to you that they've been in this community many, many years and we celebrate many businesses opening here and making investments here, but we also need to recognise those who, you know, blood, sweat and tears, to good and bad, maintain their businesses in this community and contribute in the community the way the Pungetti's have. So in that context, that's why I thought it was worthy to recognise them. So I want to certainly thank the mayor and the council for allowing this opportunity to do so. And I do have a certificate here that I'm going to read that says, "Dear Mark, Pungetti Musical Instruments Store. It always surprises me how many people refer to Pungetti's as a point of reference when providing directions to a business on Upper James Street. That tells me that a great many Hamiltonians have either purchased an instrument or taken lessons at Pungetti's music store. I can tell you that is a landmark that will sorely be missed. On behalf of the residents of Ward Eight in Hamilton Mountain, I wanted to express my sincerest appreciation to you and your parents for the immeasurable contribution that you have made to this community." The great American composer Leonard Bernstein once wrote, "Music can name the unnamable and communicate the unknowable. Yours is one of the few businesses that can instill or awaken these qualities in us and especially in our youth. Enjoy your well deserved retirement and thank you for helping make Hamilton the best place to raise a child." Councillor Terry Whitehead?
So once again, let me thank you both. I've spent quite many mandalimpics at Pungetti's and the blood, sweat and tears of course comes from those first few accordion lessons for those young students, but thank you for all your contributions. Let me give you that.
It's been a pleasure doing business in Hamilton for 55 years. My dad can't be here due to his illness, but for a gentleman who came from Italy who didn't even know how to speak English and found himself going into business for himself in an industry which, I don't know how he did it, but having to deal with the youth back in the 60s and 70s and here's a man who couldn't even speak English. He gave so much to a lot of musicians in Hamilton and I'm proud for that, for my father. And Hamilton will always continue to be wealthy in terms of music talent. It's a great city. I hope that void will be met at some point in the future, but it's been a great run. Thank you for the honour.
Now, members of council, I may have a motion please to approve the minutes of the May 22 meeting. Councillor Pearson, councillor Johnson, all in favour? As carried. Council members, communication item 1 to 513 inclusive, taking each one individually. Correspondence regarding Shinarama, would someone like to, the recommendation receive? Powers, Parkridge, all in favour?
Aye.
Item 5.2, correspondence respecting item four of the planning committee. Go ahead councillor Johnson.
Yeah, this is 5.2. This is all the added correspondence that came in after the June 4th planning meeting and I would like to recommend that it go to the planning staff with that file so they can be recorded as having their voice heard in case it goes to an OMB hearing, please.
Okay. So second, all in favour? Correspondence regarding the interest arbitration system in Ontario from Kathleen Winn the Premier. Someone like to move that? Recommendation to receive it? Powers, Pesuda, all in favour? Carried. Correspondence from Pat McLaughlin regarding respecting a taxicab complaint. Councillor Whitehead? Whitehead, Marula, all in favour? Correspondence from Joe Miner respecting PFOS at the Hamilton Airport. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you very much. Dr. Joe Miner has raised a number of issues in this and you'll see in your package notice of motion, I'm going to be bringing that forward as a motion and it's really addressing what are some of the concerns in here. The risk management study was supposed to be brought to us almost a year ago. There's new contamination found and it's mercury. So if we can, when we get to the notices of motion, I'd like to right now just refer this back to the staff that are handling the file on the PFOS.
Okay.
Thank you.
And seconded by Pearson, all in favour?
Aye.
Correspondence from Laura Ryan respecting her resignation from the accountability and transparency. Councillor Parkridge, Marula, all in favour? I'm sorry? I didn't do 5.6? Oh, I'm sorry. Correspondence from Peter Hasek respecting the DARTS article in the Hamilton Spectator.
This has been referred in the Public Works reports, it hasn't been approved by council yet to go for another operational review. It's probably appropriate this letter be referred to the operational review committee that's being set up after tonight's council meeting, so it's appropriate time I've referred to move that.
Councillor Whitehead will second that, all in favour?
Aye.
All right, now Laura Ryan's resignation, Parkridge moves it, Pesuda seconded. Would you like to speak to that? Go ahead.
Yes, if I could, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to recognise Laura Ryan has been on the Accountability and Transparency Committee with myself and councillor Ferguson and many other members of the public and I just want to say how much we appreciate the time that she has put in as well as councillor Terry Whitehead. So I do appreciate her time and her commitment and her dedication that she's put towards this file. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's councillor Ferguson?
Just on the second part of it, just for the selection committee, we're probably going to be bringing a report to GIC in September on this and then the Accountability and Transparency Committee will have fulfilled its mandate. I'm not sure we need to fill this position or whether it could even be filled by the meeting in September, but just for consideration for the selection committee before they set up and advertise for something that may in fact be outed.
Councillor Powers?
The operations of council and its committees is governed by the governance committee, so I would suggest that perhaps this should be referred to governance also.
Okay, so good with that? Councillor Whitehead?
I'm just wanting to please to ask the clerk, but it might be prudent that we can, because it does impact quorum and the terms of reference identify a number on the Transparency Accountability Committee. My concern is as time will lapse and there's going to be probably one or two meetings in between, that we might want to consider changing the terms of reference to law it by one citizen so we can continue operating without worry of meeting quorum. Can I ask clerks if that would be a concern or an issue?
Mr. Mayor, through you, we can certainly review the terms of reference. I don't have it before me to advise you if it stipulates a particular number. It was, I recall, set up for citizen members, for members of council. We'll take a look at and report back to.
Okay, so having heard that, I'm not hearing that there's a, seems to be an appetite to deal with that now. I think councillor Powers' comment is prudent to have it forwarded to the governance committee for that recommendation and consideration. Thank you.
Have councillor Clark? No? Okay, so on the matter, councillor Powers, would you?
I would suggest that the motion be, we recklessly receive the resignation and the issues raised be referred to the governance committee for their consideration.
You second that councillor Ferguson, all in favour? As carried, thank you. Correspondence from Don Ludwig respecting the Maple Leaf cul-de-sac. Councillor Johnson?
This is speaking for all the correspondence that came in on 5.8. This is the cul-de-sac issue for Glover Road South. For those of you that don't remember when Maple Leaf came in and announced that they were building, the residents had brought in a petition to ask that their street actually be cul-de-sacked off to separate the residential from the industrial park. I understand that the staff has coming forward with the report, so I'd like to recommend that 5.8 and all those pertaining to 5.8 be referred to Public Works specifically Gavin Norman's group who are working on this file.
So are you suggesting 5.9 as well be included? These are just, to receive these?
Sorry, you're right. It's 5.8 and 5.9, everything pertaining to that so that the staff have that in their file, they can use it in their staff report and then going forward.
Good.
Oh, sorry, it's GM of planning because it's to go to economic development which is Gavin Norman's group. Sorry, thanks Jerry.
Do we have that straight?
Yes, we do.
All in favour? Okay. Correspondence from Jane Lowry and Bill Hilson respecting item nine of the planning committee report 13-009. Recommendation is to receive that. Far will move it. Second, Ferguson, all in favour? Carried. Correspondence from the Hamilton Jewish Social Services respecting the present funding level for the elderly person centre. Councillor Whitehead?
I would be proud to have this forwarded to the Emergency and Community Services Committee for consideration.
Seconded. Deval, all in favour? Thank you. Correspondence from the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission respecting expanding fibre optic cable in rural areas of Hamilton. Move by Ferguson?
Just a comment that I'm disappointed in this letter. It's simply a pat on the head and that wasn't the intent. I thought they would have made reference to the understanding that the farming community is relying more and more on technology. Mr. Mayor and other members who represent the rural areas saw the farmer of the year this year has a completely automated milking system that depends on internet supply. The, of course, the harvesting and planting of crops are done through satellites now for fertiliser application which require internet connection and that's for the purpose I actually put this motion forward. They simply wrote back, "Market forces will decide this." I thought they would have indicated they understood that the rural community depends more and more in this technology and they'll do something in approvals to get fibre optic out there, but they didn't do that. They simply told us, "Go away." And so I don't know what to do about it other than receive it, but I'm disappointed in the reply.
Okay, well, we can receive it and take further action as we deem fit on our own.
I don't have an IT person in the room here. I guess maybe our finance department, finance reports to them. Is there anything more through you, Mr. Mayor, to our finance staff that we as a city can do to get more fibre optic cable installed in rural areas?
Through you, Mayor? No, we'll have to check back with staff on that on how we can, how we can get that done.
Maybe it would be appropriate then, Mr. Mayor, that I'll move that be referred to our finance department for a report back to committee on our council on what further we can do with this problem.
Seconded?
Yep.
Johnson, all in favour? Thank you. Correspondence from, oh, I'm sorry councillor, you had your hand.
I was going to suggest this letter also be sent off to FCM. As councillors Whitehead and Deval know, is the issue of fibre optics and communications has been an issue before FCM and they're having ongoing discussions with the relevant ministry, so perhaps by providing this correspondence is just another, I'm going to say, indication of the pat on the back that's being received and there's no serious intent being taken.
So what's the form, what form of communication do you suggest?
I would suggest it be sent to the executive director, the chief executive officer of FCM for distribution to the appropriate committee of FCM for their consideration.
Clerks note that. And do we need a seconded for that? Councillor Whitehead?
And I just want to add, Mr. Chair, it's ironic, quite frankly, that 76 years ago, the first AGM of FCM took place and the issue then was in fact telecommunications and technology and the lack of understanding and how it impacted on municipalities. So it's kind of ironic, you know, a complete full circle, we're dealing with fibre optics and serving the rural community, so I just wanted to highlight how ironic that is.
Councillor Clark, did you want to speak to that?
There we go. Just a suggestion for councillor Ferguson, CRTC is a regulatory body, but perhaps correspondence from the city of Hamilton to Industry Canada, and then it becomes a political decision in terms of how the federal government would actually see that it happened and it would be Industry Canada's responsibility.
Maybe our finance department should take that into consideration when they prepare the report back to committee then or back to council.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, have a full thorough report and I see there's notes being made on councillor Clark's comments, so they can certainly check that out too.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favour? Thank you. Correspondence from the Hamilton Conservation Authority respecting permanent truck use ban on Kenneworth Axis. Councillor Jackson?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that that be referred to the next Monday's, June 17th Public Works Committee meeting where this matter will be debated. Thank you.
Seconded by Whitehead, all in favour? Thank you. Councillor Clark, a motion please on the communications.
Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Parkridge. The council communications line one and five through five of all be approved as amended.
All in favour? Councillor Whitehead may have a motion please to move into committee of the whole for consideration of the committee reports.
You certainly can, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself and seconded by councillor Scott Deval, that the council move into committee of the whole for consideration of the committee reports.
All in favour?
Aye.
Turn it over now to the chair to the deputy mayor, councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The Public Works Committee presents report number 13-007 and respectfully recommends item number one. Councillor Farr on item number one, please.
Deputy Mayor, I'm happy to report this item is the King Street West, westbound lane closure we've been dealing with even as a council, let alone the King West BIA and others in the community and outside the community who often use this route for commuting, Ann Castor, Dundas and others, anyone west. I just wanted to report, and it's timely, that I received news this afternoon, it was him, not me.
Yeah.
The DBI has commenced removing the hoarding wall and barricades there at 275 King Street West.
It must be Christmas. On item number one, all those in favour? Thank you. On item number two? On item number three? Number three, councillor Marula and councillor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And let me start off by saying that the DART, this is related to the DART 2012 deficit funding, but over and above that, as a direct result of my communications with councillor Ferguson, as anyone can recall that was intimately involved with this process over the last decade, I brought forward an operational review of DARTs. My intent at that time was to evaluate all options, but my option that I supported would have been an in-house option under the HSR. At that time, we went through an entire exhaustive process, one that concluded and deduced that if we had provided certain conditions, that the service would improve. We provided those conditions and we also mitigated some of the aspects associated with the contract. Since then, what we've seen is an actual deficit continuation as well as some issues surrounding the service itself. And councillor Ferguson and I discussed it. I know that we were on opposing sides on the issue a few years back, but I think he concurs that the issue needs to be dealt with again in evaluating the ongoing operational aspects that are leading to the complaints basically quadrupling over the last number of years or the last couple of years. So in essence, what we have here is a situation where we as a committee at Public Works have put together a plan of action to revisit what already exists, already exists, already exists in, from a terms of reference perspective from our previous term of council and that being a committee to oversee the operation of DARTs. And in saying that, I'm gladly willing to put forward my name as I have through email to be part of that committee because I think it's instrumental and as you know, with our population aging quickly and this is going to become more of a pressing issue down the road. What's more interesting in this debate is that DARTs provides, as everyone knows that has followed this issue, 80% of the trips that we provide in a day, we're providing to provincially mandated programs. So again, with our relation of who does what and who pays for what, we have the municipality and the households municipally paying for services to transport individuals from their home to programs, there are 80% of it that are provincially mandated. So in essence, this is something that we as not only a city, but as a province needs to evaluate. I know that and I'm going to assure that councillor Powers would recognise this from AMO's perspective, that paratransit service at the municipal level is non-sustainable as we know it today, particularly when you're looking at the aging population in the future and it's something that needs to be uploaded along with the other 20% of our operating budget which roughly equals about $120 million a year that we don't have any control over. So in saying that, this, the committee that we struck last term of council, does not need to be reestablished because it already exists and I want to express my interest in being part of that because this is something we need to focus in on because it's something that's going to become more of a crisis as we go down the road in the future as a result of our aging population. And I want to express my interest in participating in this particular initiative today, but also highlight the fact that the deficit, the bleeding's got to stop and we've got to figure out somehow of having that bleeding stop and I look forward to finding that solution. And I'm glad that others that didn't support it, the in-house scenario in the past, are now looking at that as a viable option. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you councillor Marula. Councillor Jackson, please.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, yes, I'm supportive of what's before us here tonight and the information section, item H, which talks about the review of the DARTs operation and resurrecting.
resurrecting, reactivating, if you will, the, the review committee. And I want to thank councillor Marula because he has been consistent on this messaging from the last couple of terms of council in feeling that similar to the water services that we went through the last 10, 15 years where eventually we brought it all in-house, that he's always felt that in-house would be more accountable and more efficiently run. I was a member last term of council that supported the hybrid, which we currently have, where we have this contractual arrangement with DARTs. Overall, I think we're one of the fewest municipalities in the whole country that have this kind of hybrid, where we have our HSR, regular conventional transit system, and we have the specialized system of DARTs. It's always bothered me every budget year, last several years if I recall, including this year, where there's a deficit. And here tonight, they're requesting an extra $51,000 in order to cover off expenses from the last operating year. So be it. It's an important service to our community, primarily for seniors, those that are disabled. And I'm proud of the fact that we have both that as an alternative along with our HSR conventional transit system. However, I was led to believe last term of council when I supported the hybrid, and if I recall, staff brought forward the fact if we brought it in-house, there may have been significant one-time costs to bringing it in-house, which was a factor. But if I recall, Mr. Deputy Mayor, staff at the time had said that with the, with the two systems, that the DARTs and the conventional transit, that there, if DARTs was handed more responsibilities such as scheduling, that the DARTs management felt they could make this system more efficient, less costly, and have greater control and less complaints. And here we are, a year later, after handing them additional responsibilities, complaints have doubled or tripled, maybe quadrupled, we're still in deficit. So I think overall, without being disparaging to anyone, I think the timing of the review at this moment is appropriate, and so I'm supporting that moving forward. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Jackson. Councillor Farr, please.
Yeah, and a proud DARTs board member along with my colleague councillor Whitehead, and certainly supportive of a review. It's something that the board actually had asked for back in April of 2011. It is an important service, no doubt. There's a strong board at DARTs that talks about this service. It's made up of customers, it's made up of many folks in the community, and, and of course, we're working with staff on a monthly basis as well with discussions revolving around the over 500,000 customer interactions per year with this very important service. And I just brought with me some stats. I did watch the Public Works debate on the stream following the report issued by our HSR staff, and I thought it would be an appropriate time tonight. And again, as I said off the top, supporting the review and the board actually looking for it in April 2011. Complaints are collected on all areas of DARTs customer service, some of the things we need to know. That includes the call center, scheduling, dispatching, and driving, Mr. Deputy Mayor. As of April 2013, the HSR is reporting that DARTs exceeded the city benchmark for complaints with 340 complaints. That's about 200 complaints over budget of the 120, and up to and including April. So far this year, however, over one-third of the complaints are late ride complaints. But DARTs, it should be noted, is also at 99% on time in performance, which is four points higher than the benchmark. 99% on time, when you calculate, you put it all in. In four months, we delivered 152,298 passengers door-to-door, answered 60,000 calls, that's over 212,000 customer interactions. That's a one complaint per 1,700 service interactions. That's one per 1,700 opportunities to complain. And that, does the city have any other services at this level or service standard? That's kind of the, the kind of things I'm hopeful that this review will be able to compare and contrast and look at. DARTs has a 97,000 to date for this year, a $97,000 surplus, and has a 2017 trip surplus and is 99% on time with its performance, which is again exceeding the city's on-time benchmark, 95% by four points. And I'll conclude simply with these stats, just looking at our comparators. For 2010, the Canadian Urban Transit Association Paratransit Factbook, Mr. Deputy Mayor, reports the following on the top 10 cities in Canada that provide this valuable service. The report shows various levels of complaints and various types of service delivery models. And I'll just give a few. In Edmonton, the ratio of complaints per rides is 1 in 600. In Winnipeg, it's 1 in every 221. In Toronto, 1 in every 720. And in Montreal, 1 in every 788. And I'll repeat finally, in Hamilton, 1 in every 1,173. So thank you. It was, it was a good debate and some good questions in Public Works Committee. I did again watch that in its entirety, and I support what's before us, and so too, I think confidently I can say from two years ago in an April meeting, the board does as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Farr. Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And of course, this matter came to Public Works as looking for authorization for the extra $50,000, which in the grand scheme of things is not a huge variance. But the problematic areas was in the matrix that was included in the report was the number of complaints, which is councillor Marula said it almost quadrupled from budget, budget to actual, and the significant reduction in number of trips. And for the benefit of those who weren't on the Public Works Committee, through if I can, Don, I don't know whether you have that report with you, Mr. Hall, and can you tell us what the variance was in complaints and the variance in number of trips?
Thank you, councillor.
I think it was on page three of the report, as I recall.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, thank you through the deputy mayor. The target was 360, the actual complaints were 1390, so a variance of 1,030 against target, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
So it's quadrupling. And what about the number of trips? Were we down significantly in the number of trips? Borrow my glasses?
We were down 7,300 trips relative to projected budget, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Right. And, and so when you saw a small cost overrun, but 7,000 trips less and complaints up 400%. Now, I'm not saying we should take this in-house yet, I just want to see the numbers. It was reported to us, and I've had it confirmed since the meeting, that they had an issue, because councillor Jackson is absolutely right. They came to us a year ago, recently, I'm going to say a year ago, I'm not sure of the exact time, and said, we want to take on full responsibility, full accountabilities. We want to do the scheduling and, and the, take the orders. And so we did. We handed that over to them, but we saw complaints quadruple. So we just need to have, get our heads around this, what caused it, what's the corrective action, whether it's in-house or whether it's put performance standards in with the, with the board and with the senior staff at DARTs. And so the, the actual referral for report, referring this to for an operation review is in the Information Section of the minutes. I don't think it's in the actual motion is the extra $50,000 because they were over budget last year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Whitehead, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I, to really, I think we should be doing this on every agency that is performing the responsibility on behalf of the city of Hamilton. And we need to reflect on what the performance measures we're utilizing, how they're being exercised, what's being filtered. For example, in complaints, if somebody's complaining about the fair fee, DARTs has no control of it, but that could be captured in a, in a complaint. So we need to understand what is the process in filtering those complaints, we understand what's really falls on the responsibility of DARTs. Secondly, so I think that's part of the role of the operation review to, to, to reflect on those performance measures. And then councillor Farr did an excellent job talking about how DARTs stacks up cost-wise and performance-wise with many paratransit systems across this country. So if you're benchmarking, you need to understand that we're doing pretty damn good. The second piece is that we need to understand is that DARTs does a door-to-door service. And, and like councillor Farr indicated, over $500,000 contacts. So even the complaints are talking about, that represents 2%, 2%. Now, if I took 2% and applied that across the board on all services the city provides, I'd like to know how those services would stack up. And I think it'd be an interesting exercise, quite frankly. The other thing is, is when you take a look at the standard of them, meaning 99 or 97% against the benchmark on time, on schedule, yet a chunk of the complaints, schedule, pick up. So there's not, so somehow they're not aligning even with their own processes. So I think it is timely to, to institute, institute the, the committee, the operation overview, and take a look at those issues. And see if we can clearly refine the matrix in performance measurements to ensure that we are getting true value, which is always a concern around this table, and whether there, in fact, is a possibility of a different and better model that could deliver a higher level of service. So I, I look forward to, I believe councillor Farr and I already sit on the, on the ATS committee. I look forward to, I hope councillor Ferguson puts his name forward as well, because I think his point of view would be well respected at the table and well appreciated. So I look forward to the committee getting constituted.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And through you, just a quick question either to, to Don or Finance. If the request is for $50,000 to top up, but I thought I heard a previous speaker say that they had a reserve or a surplus of 97,000, so why the 50,000 request?
I think the reserve they're referring to is their 97,000 favorable against budget in 2013, if I understand correctly. The 50,000 refers to their 2012 year end, and that was absorbed within the budget, the HSR budget which come in favorable against budget, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you could take the chair for a second, please? Can I ask you to, Mr. Hall, what's the cost of the operational review?
Depending, that's a good question, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. How it is scoped out, staff have ideas on how to proceed. We would like to see a thorough and transparent review. We've actually had some discussion internally with the, the new pilot wing of internal audit, and perhaps we could even look internally to do this review. So that's entirely dependent on the final scope that, of direction we get from the committee. But our sense is that we may well be do, be able to do it in-house with in-house resources, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So to be clear, Mr. Mayor, are we approving the operational review with this motion? Or are we approving you coming back with options on an operational review and what the costs are going to be?
I am not sure I'm the person to answer that question, Mr. Deputy Mayor, since this is being instigated by members of council. I, from everything I've heard here tonight, I think it makes eminent sense to come back and, and check in. It's been about 18 months since we had this major transition, and I might suggest that the, the exercise be to bring the committee's level of knowledge up to a point where they can determine whether or not we need to report back to council and undertake a full operational review. That would be my suggestion, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor, can Mr. Hall explain why there were 7,300 less trips with DARTs?
No, other than it's just DARTs wasn't able to, to provide those trips within, within the capacity available. I suspect that that would be one of the key issues we'd look at in the terms of a, of a review, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And we'd, we'd seek feedback from, from DARTs and the DARTs clients, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some quick comments from my colleagues. I might suggest that we make it clearer in terms of what we're requesting today. We went through an operational review. I sat on ATS with councillor Marula and a number of my colleagues. It was a long, long process and quite controversial at times. And we were told that there would be efficiencies found that would save money and increase the number of trips. We're seeing here a significant drop in the number of trips. I have concerns that we're simply saying we want an operational review without seeing the scope of the operational review or what the actual cost of the operational review are going to be. So the, the normal process, I think, would be that we would get a report back with the alternatives of what the operational review would be, and then we could choose one, you know, A, B, or C, whatever the case is. Not sure where we sit on the ATS committee, because that was 18 months ago, whether or not it's needs to be reconstituted with terms of reference. Not sure what the terms of reference for that ATS were. It may have been different 18 months ago, given that we're now looking at a different situation and a different timeframe where we actually handed over the entire process of running DARTs to DARTs lock, stock, and barrel. Because when we were dealing with the ATS, and councillor Marula, remember this, it was a hybrid system back then when we were wrestling with it. So I'm not sure the report really provides clarity in terms of what we as a council are asking for, and I think we should be providing that clarity before we would move forward. And with that, I would take the chair back, sir. Thank you. Councillor Whitehead and then councillor Marula.
I just want to add, and I agree with councillor, the previous he spoke, that we need to develop the terms of reference and go forward basis. And I think that's something that could be developed and then by the, the committee and then moved back to council for approval. So I think that is what the subcommittee work is. The second piece I wanted to identify is that there's been two issues that have come up. One, cost-wise, was the trapeze program. There was some additional cost and training that might have impacted on the budget. And secondly, and I know that Don can verify it, there was a telephone system that was installed and recommended by IT that didn't get the job done, and it actually shut down and created a number of complaints which would be part of these numbers. So there are a couple anomalies that contributed to what we see here before us, and, and I want to make sure that my colleagues understand that that is in fact what happened.
Thank you, councillor Whitehead. Councillor Marula, please.
Just to, I guess, clarify, the issue surrounding the terms of reference already exists. We did it two terms ago, and at the committee it did come up, the issue of the terms of reference. So staff at that time had alluded or had actually concluded and agreed that they would rehash those same terms of reference, which I don't believe would differ today versus then, because we're still looking for the same efficiency, the same savings. So just so to clarify, that is exactly the intent, the terms of reference do exist. We just want a continuation of those terms of reference from the original term of council. So perhaps what we can do is have this come back to us, what's before us is that we will follow through with this committee, but maybe that we have the terms of reference being provided at GIC prior to pursuing it even further. That work's already been done. It's just a matter of basically dusting it off and bringing it back.
Okay, so councillors, what I have before us, what I see here is we have the Longwood Transportation Review that the recommendation is to receive. I heard councillor Ferguson indicated that in the Information Section of the report it talked about the operational review. So we're in essence at this moment not approving an operational review. So I need clarification.
Yes, that is interesting because that committee, the intent of the initiative was to actually reactivate that committee. And I'm expressed, that's why I was expressing interest to see.
So then I would suggest that someone from that committee would lift that item from the Information Section.
So be it. So I will move that.
And make it a formal motion to establish.
Right. Okay, so moved by myself, seconded by councillor Ferguson, that we do just that. And okay, sorry.
Okay, and that you're going to reestablish the ATS committee and ask staff to come back with options on an operational review.
That's correct, based on the terms of reference that had already.
Correct.
Yeah.
Now I'll go to councillor Ferguson.
Just through if I can to the clerk, because I was puzzled by the same thing in our Reddit. Is it typical when we give staff directions, it says on a motion, staff are directed to investigate and reestablish the accessibility transits service review subcommittee, which was the motion that carried at Public Works? Is it in the right place being in information then based on that resolution?
With the greatest respect, we just spent time debating that exact issue. So if this council wants to move that motion, now's the time to do that.
I'd just like to comment with the clerk.
And I'm the Chair, so the clerk provides advice to me. If you're suggesting that my suggestion is inappropriate, then, well, we're wasting a lot of time, guys.
Madam Clerk?
Do you want to move forward with the operational review or not?
Yeah, I'd just like to understand the process. Help me learn by getting a response. Maybe, maybe it's been done correctly, I don't know.
Deputy Mayor, through you, looks like the intention, because it was direction to staff and that the expectation is that public work staff will be reporting back to the Public Works Committee with this information and then make a decision. But the Chair has sort of accelerated that process by having council make that decision.
It was raised here in debate. If you want to proceed with it, because you're just debating an operational review, then this body has to make the call.
And I agree. All I'm saying is that at committee, I moved it. I moved that initiative. So it must have been oversight, and I blame no one but myself. Obviously, I wasn't making myself clear enough. So at committee, I moved that initiative to be reestablished. So that was.
So then you're moving it now to make sure.
And I'm just reaffirming what we did at committee.
Okay, and it's not in the minutes, it's in information, so someone didn't hear the motion. Over here to a seconder.
Over here to a seconder.
Sorry, just in that, if the motion wasn't picked up, then very clearly the transposition, the dealing with it is appropriate, being an information item. Your ruling of raising it from the information in order to make it an action item is appropriate.
Thank you. The motion has been moved by councillor.
Well, Mr Clerk, I've just been informed, because the committee already is established, there's no need for us to.
To ATC or ATS.
Because it already exists.
So really, we're talking about the operational review, options on the operational review.
It already exists, so we don't need to move that. It already exists, all we're doing is reactivate it. So anyone that wants to be part of it, I was just informed by.
On the ATS.
Yeah, the entire operational review.
The ATS is the committee. Moving an operational review is different, councillor.
No, they're one and the same. Okay, to you, Mr Chair, to Mrs Gallagher or Madam Clerk.
We could have had the vote by now.
Yeah, but we already have it.
Deputy Mayor, sorry, just to clarify, I understand that the Accessible Transit Services Review Committee already has an operational review committee established, and what was missing were three members of council to that subcommittee.
And that's why I'd expressed interest, Mr Deputy Mayor.
So again, I question who still stands, what's the cost? Mr Hull said he would come back with options. Where is that going to happen?
It's already built in, so the committee exists, so I just want to be part of it. So I just want to be known that I want to be part of that committee, and Mr Hull can report back with respect to the cost. But through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, to Madam Clerk, the costs associated with it, is there anything you might be able to add, or would you like Mr Hull to do that? Yeah, that's fine. GIC is fine.
Councillors, I'm asking for a motion. You're requesting an operational review on the matter. With the greatest respect, I'm asking for the motion so that Mr Hull can go back here and give us the options.
Okay, so the committee exists, all we need to know now is what the cost is. So I moved to find out what those costs are, and I also moved that I want to be part of that involvement, or that committee.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Whitehead. So we have the motion before us. Mr Hull, you understand you're going to report back on the options, on the operational review, and that would come back to Public Works and then to here.
Mr Chair, I'd like to move councillor Ferguson on that committee as well.
Councillor Ferguson, do you wish to sit on the ATS committee?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to move councillor Deval.
And councillor Deval, do you wish to sit on the ATS committee? Anyone else? How many do we need? Madam Clerk, four?
Deputy Mayor, there are five in total. Two are already selected, councillor Farr and councillor Whitehead.
So we now have five.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been moved, seconded by councillor Farr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the ATS committee. On the main motion, number three, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Installation of Stock Controls McNabb Street.
Aye.
Number five.
Aye.
Number six.
Aye.
Number seven.
Aye.
Councillor Ferguson, may I have a motion on the main report, please?
Yes, moved by myself, seconded by councillor Maria Pearson, the seventh report of the Public Works Committee be adopted and the information section received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Planning Committee represents report number 13009 and respectfully recommends item number one.
Aye.
Item number two.
Aye.
Item number three.
Aye.
On three, thank you, councillor Jackson, please.
Mr Deputy Mayor, just want to thank Planning Committee for their unanimous recommendation here. This is quickly for other members of council. This is involving a lot of those beautiful oversized lots along Mountain Brow Boulevard, basically from Upper Gage all the way over to 338 Mountain Brow Boulevard. This is simply, and this staff report positively recommended, a preservation of the beautiful front yard setbacks to 75 feet minimum to protect against any new purchasers and/or speculators that may want to alter the unique character of this area. I want to thank Planning Committee so much, and I want to specifically thank from general manager Tim McCabe's department, Tim, Greg McDonald, Steve Robichaud, Peter Doolio, and Paul Mallard for all their help and assistance. And I want to thank Planning Committee, councillors Partridge and Pearson for moving the amendment to look beyond that stretch, the first phase of homes, right now all the way over from 340 Mountain Brow Boulevard to Mohawk Roadies, because that's all part and parcel of that unique character along Mountain Brow Boulevard. Probably one of the last bastions, one of the last areas, Mr Deputy Mayor, in an urbanized setting where you have these very unique, beautiful, oversized lots. Thanks very much, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, and we did vote on item three already. On item number four, councillor Johnson.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. This is regarding the Stony Creek Urban Boundary Expansion. When I finish speaking, I would be requesting a standing recorded vote, please, because I want to be recorded as opposed in part to the secondary plan. First, I want to thank all the volunteers who spent endless hours with the committee advisory committee. This committee started in 2007 and ended in 2009, and also to the group of people that I brought together since I've been on this council to take care of the file, and the stakeholders that came with them to get some fresh eyes perspective. I'm grateful for everyone who took the time to attend the community meeting held on May 23rd. Over 300 people came out and many more were turned away. To those who wrote petitions and spoke at the planning committee meeting and asking this council to oppose the secondary plan, your input was very much appreciated. Lastly, I want to say thank you to my planning committee colleagues who sat through a 10-hour marathon meeting, to hear over 30 speakers who took the day off to attend the June 4th meeting. Thank you so much. I also want to say that it's pretty unfortunate, there were some people out there who are under the understanding and were misled that their land was going to be expropriated, their houses were going to be demolished, and six-story apartment buildings were going to be put in its place. So I'm hoping this, they got away from that, came away from that planning committee meeting knowing that that was not the case. So one of the reasons that I'm planning, I want to oppose this was, and I want you all to remember your own wards, we all have unique communities in our own wards. We have the Keith neighborhood in Ward 2, we have the Beach Boulevard and its extensive history in Ward 5. We have special events like 1812 War reenactments, Heritage Day, Supercrawls, historical moments. Winona and Fruitland are unique communities as well. We are surrounded by fruit farms. We are the narrowest stretch of land between the escarpment and the lake. And what happens is, this actually benefits from the fruit farmers, it's micro.
Climate.
No, just a minute, thanks. But it's actually called microclimate. And what happens is that the air comes off the escarpment, it goes over to the lake, it circles back after it warms up in the summer and it cools down in the wintertime. And the fruit farmers in the area take great advantage of that. So if you're ever wondering how the fruit farming affects the Winona area, I challenge all of you to drive down number eight highway, starting now to the end of October. You can get everything from strawberries and raspberries, cherries and grapes, and yes, even peaches, because that's what we're famous for, the Winona Peach Festival. So we have farmers writing in their concerns about the height of the proposed buildings and also spoke to this issue on July, on June the 4th. The farmers are asking the city to limit the height restrictions in the placement of the units to allow Mother Nature to do her job. In response to this concern, the staff have implemented a clause in the secondary plan that each application must have a study to prove it will not harm these conditions. So I want you to all imagine now, we're down in downtown Hamilton and we have one smokestack, and the study showed that one smokestack's not going to be a problem. And then the next smokestack comes around, and a study shows that that smokestack won't be a problem. And then the third, the fourth, and before you know it, we have a compromised airshed. So this is what I'm worried about, and the farmers are worried about, that if we look at each application on its own, then you're not going to look at it holistically in the entire area and how it's going to affect. The province has spent billions of dollars to ensure we protect our green space and agricultural lands through the Green Belt legislation and the Niagara Escarpment Commission. I remember when it was announced here at GIC that our agricultural industry contributes $1.26 billion to this city, and everyone here was impressed. Well, I don't believe that we need to be talking out of both sides of our mouth. We're impressed with the industry, but we have to take steps to preserve it. So yes, we can brag about our vibrant culture, agriculture culture, and even to go to great lengths to try to protect our horse racing industry as we should, then neglect the fruit farming industry would be a travesty. So my issue is with the height. I have numerous, and the second issue is, I have numerous times told the staff that the placement of the community park with two elementary schools to create a campus-like atmosphere is setting us up for failure. This community park is placed with two, was placed in the secondary plan before the Alliance Church was purchased in Ward 10, which is separated by Ward 11, Fruitland Road. The Ward 10 community park location is a stone throw away from the proposed park and rec center. We will not be able to prove that there's a need for a rec center and community park when there's now a newly purchased community center and a park less than a half a kilometer away. Every time I brought my concerns to the staff, I ended up in another meeting with more staff. So if, and that is the big if, the community park in its location with two schools, what happens if the schools decide to close? We are setting up a future council to respond to that void in the neighborhood to maintain that campus. My colleague was quoted in the paper saying that it's like a gun being put to our heads when schools close down, and he's absolutely correct. So I want those amenities either moved to a different, into two different locations and broken up so that we can ensure success at the end of the day. And the third and final reason is, the location of the Collector Road A does not have leave the community with any reassurance or comfort as it's not been decided where it will go. A long history surrounds this bypass for Fruitland Road, which I could not get my hands on, and I thank councillor Pearson for this information. In 1992, the region of Hamilton-Wentworth put money aside and firmed up the plans for the bypass. A bump up for the environmental assessment was requested, and it took a number of years to complete. The bypass was designed to start just south of the southeast corner of Fruitland and Barton Street at the end of Highway, and go to the end of Highway 8. To ensure this bypass was constructed in that area, property was even purchased by the former municipality. In 2000, sorry, the region, in 2000, the newly amalgamated city put a hold on all major projects and a new priority list was created. The money for this bypass was put into a pot to fund the new priority list. Fruitland bypass either did not make the list, or at least was not a top priority. In the meantime, the environmental assessment was expired. So now, in 2007, the community advisory committee was created, and all three concepts show the original placement of that bypass. In June 24th, 2010, before I came on council, the secondary plan was shown to the public, and the bypass had changed direction. The public repeatedly asked, why did the direction of the bypass change? And the answer was always, the environmental assessment expired. And that, and this is what we're proposing. So for some of you that don't know, the bypass was doing this, the environmental assessment expired, so now the bypass looks like this. And there's no rhyme or reason other than the environmental assessment expired. So finally, Mr Deputy Mayor, I know the secondary plan was worked on exhaustively and presented to the public before I even came on to council. I also appreciate everyone's frustration with the process, and if it was done all over again, I could guarantee you it would come out differently, meaning the process. If any of you had the opportunity to wave a magic wand over the problematic areas of your ward, you'd grab at that opportunity in a minute. This secondary plan is proposing to expand Winona-Fruitland area by two and a half times. We have the opportunity today to address the most obvious problematic issues before they end up costing us and our resources tomorrow. We heard loud and clear that this plan is going to be challenged at the OMB. We will be attending this hearing, and my position is if we go into this hearing supporting the public's number one concern, lowering the height, it will keep, and it will still be keeping within the Places to Grow provincial policy statement and the Green Belt legislation. So again, Mr Deputy Mayor, I'm opposing this, and I'm asking for a standing reported vote. Thank you.
Thank you councillor, and we view some latitude since you're the ward councillor regarding the issue. Councillor Powers, please.
I'll just take one second. Councillor Johnson said it better than I did. I wasn't able to and didn't to enter planning committee marathon. But the point raised by councillor Johnson with regards to the impact of the multi-residential buildings and its impact on the microclimate is very, very valid. The fact that the province is encouraging and in a strong way, the minister, the premier has assumed the, as Minister of Agriculture and Agrofood, and that to promote, you know, meat-in Ontario products. Yet at the same time, the conflicting legislation of Places to Grow and the intensification causes challenges for us here. The suggestion that it's one-off, you know, everyone will be looked on a one-off basis, I think is very, very appropriately quantified by councillor Johnson. And my suggestion would be that the area needs to be identified specifically and looked at the collective impact rather than the individual impacts before anything proceeds. I don't know whether that's possible in here, whether that's something as things evolve, as things go down the road, but otherwise, that's my singular comment.
Thank you councillor Powers. Councillor McCaddie, please.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. And I think unfortunately, development of this area is really a travesty from basic principles of planning. This is the only, they're the largest land parcel we have left for tender fruit growing within the Hamilton area. And that land and the situation there with the microclimate is not something that you can create anywhere else. It's a one-time situation, and once it's gone or compromised, as councillor Johnson's indicated, it's gone forever. So I want, first of all, I want to make it clear that this whole process and the idea of developing this land did precede councillor Johnson. She's come on as the new councillor in this term of council, Mr Deputy Mayor, as you know, and it should not be in any way identified with a plan that's here in front of us. She has different views, different visions for her community, which I share, and it's not fair to characterize her in relation to the plan that's before us tonight. So Mr Deputy Mayor, we've heard from councillor Johnson, councillor Powers touched on it as well, this issue of the loss of the microclimate in the tender fruit lands. And it sounds to me like the policy that staff is proposing is problematic. It suggests that each individual development be evaluated, determine how it negatively affects, or perhaps how it negatively affects the microclimate. That's the approach, and I think the analogy that councillor Johnson used was the air pollution issues we have, where each individual stack has a certificate of approval. They're all individually approved, and there's no sense of the cumulative impact that occurs across Hamilton, in particular the east end, north end of the city in our case. So I wonder if I can ask for you to, to staff, would they support an over, across-the-board height limit in this area, suggesting three stories or perhaps 11 meters in terms of height? I understand there's some science behind that number in terms of the airflow in the area protecting the tender fruit lands and the microclimate. That appears to be the way that we should go, and is that something that staff can support? It's been discussed tonight, and if we approve or disprove the overall motion tonight, we won't have the opportunity to make that change unless, of course, it ends up at the OMB, and there's opportunities perhaps there. But it seems to me, while it's still in the purview of this city council, we should do our very best to protect the tender fruit lands without probably the opportunity to turn this down altogether. There's a lot of planning that's gone on over the last five years or so with this Scooby Lands, Mr Deputy Mayor. So a question to staff on their rationale for the one-off, one-off analysis of the heights, and whether in fact they would support across-the-board height limit, which would protect the microclimate. Mr Deputy Mayor, through you to Tim.
Thank you councillor McCaddie. Mr McCabe, please.
Through you, Mr Deputy Mayor. So let me correct one thing, it is not a one-off, one-off study. The secondary plan policies require the study, the scoped air drainage analysis study, to be done as part of the overall servicing, the block servicing before any development can happen. So it's not done in a one-off, one-off, so they'll be looking at the maximum impact with the maximum heights in the block area analysis. So that policy is in the secondary plan and in the official plan amendment, Mr Deputy Mayor. As well, staff had supported six stories. The committee had reduced the six-story medium density to a maximum of four stories. So we're talking maximum four stories, subject to that study. And the reduction of six to four is as low as the planning staff could support at this point. We did really encourage a mix of densities and heights in terms of ensuring that is a complete community with a diversity of housing. So we can support the change to the planning, the planning committee made, but no less in heights, Mr Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr McCabe. Councillor McCaddie.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Mayor. So it seems to me that there obviously are conflicts between the Places to Grow perspective and intensified complete communities, and the, and depending on where it is in the city, conflict between that, in this case, the tender fruit lands. This area, I think, is absolutely unique, and we could say that for a variety of areas across the city, but from an agricultural perspective, there's no doubt these lands are unique. So it seems to me, in this case, the value of the tender fruit lands should trump the height issues, and we should make sure that the protection of the tender fruit lands is paramount rather than other aspects of this development. So if you can come back to me at the appropriate time, I'm going to suggest that we place a three-story limit on the development in this area, and that's based on my understanding from councillor Johnson, that that's what the local farmers have asked for. from councillor Johnson, that that's what the local farmers have asked for, farmers who have farmed this land for decades and decades and understand the way that the microclimate and the winds move in this area. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor McCarty. Councillor Persouda, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Clark, and my colleagues have expressed about the air drainage pretty well here today. But I'm still going to go on to that. We have a green belt in place that protects farmland, and we have policies, we talk about intensification. So we're going to intensify. The farmland is still there, it's green-belted, it's protected. It can stay there forever. The problem here is we're not protecting the farmer who's using that land. And by doing that, we have to keep the height of these buildings down. There's science is out there with this air drainage. I believe councillor Johnson said, "Once the buildings are there, there's nothing we can do about it as far as the height." Even myself, I believe, with some of the science I've looked at, even with 11-meter heights, it's going to affect the air drainage and the circulation on those tender fruit lands. It's something we can't replace, those lands down there. Other farmlands, they go. We can try to increase production in other ways out there. This land is truly special land that we need to protect. And I supported councillor Johnson at the committee meeting, and on the vote down there we lost trying to keep intensification down the height. I'm still going to support councillor Johnson any way I can on this. It's something that we need to really focus on. The loss of, it'll be the farmers, not the land, and you need the farmers to work this land. The farmers are going to lose out because if they can't produce, their crops freeze off. That's the end of that. So that's my part on that, and like I said, it's the conflict here because we have the greenbelted lands to protect the farmers, and then we turn around to intensification because that's what the province asked for, and we just mess it all up. So I'll leave it at that, but I'll be supporting councillor Johnson any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Persouda. Councillor Whitehead, please.
Deputy Mayor, can I just ask, these lands are within the urban boundary. Is that a result of always being an urban boundary, or is that something that was achieved through Ontario Municipal Board hearings?
Mr. McCabe, please.
Yeah, so the Scooby area, the lands was brought into the urban area by an amendment to the Stony Creek Plan and confirmed at the Ontario Municipal Board as a urban boundary expansion several years ago.
So, okay, so the land has already been identified for development through this process. I guess the only other thing, because I know that even a three-story, you're going to have, it's going to be four stories high because you're still going to have the amenities, air conditioning, HVAC systems, et cetera. So I'm trying to understand the science behind how three stories versus four stories will clearly impact the farmers. So have we done these drainage, air drainage studies currently to determine what the acceptable heights are, or is that a requirement in the future before anything is built? The onus would be on the developer to ensure that the development to propose, even if it's, say, it's four stories right now, whether or not it would impact on their drainage.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, the studies have not been done. They will be required as part of the block servicing study. So we have a secondary plan, official plan, secondary plan, and these block servicing studies. So they're kind of like block plans that all the microclimate studies will have to be done. If the science is there, these studies will be done by experts, and if it's determined that it is an issue with respect to negative adverse impacts, the zoning that goes with the development application that will follow such studies will restrict the height to less than four stories.
So the science will still determine the height of the building when those block studies are completed?
Well, it'll be the height, the spacing, the density, the location.
So I want to listen to my councillors. I want to, actually, I want to congratulate councillor Johnson. I thought she did an excellent job through this process, not only through the process but in her, in your reputation here tonight. So, I mean, I was just going to slam dunk this thing because I thought it was the right thing to do, but it does give fruit for thought in what councillor Johnson had to suggest. But I wouldn't mind hearing her second time around if she's prepared to do that, because I'm hearing now that the studies are obligated in regard to the block development, and then that those studies will determine the height of the building anyway, and I don't know what the concern is if that is in fact the case. So I'll be listening very interesting.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you can take the chair, please. Through you, sir, to Mr. McCabe. Can you, we understand there was an OMB hearing, and the outcome of the OMB hearing led to the urban boundary expansion. We have an official plan. Can you just walk through the documents that have already been approved by council that directly relate to the property known as Scooby?
Madam Deputy Mayor, so it would be an amendment to the regional plan, data as an urban area, amendment to the plan, data as an urban area, sub watershed study, which has been done in conjunction with this, and the detailed land use or secondary plan that's before you today.
And, Mr. Mayor, through you to Mr. McCabe, I understand we also, as a council, made determinations in terms of the densities that are permitted across the entire city. Densities in certain areas are lower than others. Did we approve a specified density for this particular area?
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I now have to bring in some of my experts on these detailed questions. So Alyssa is here to answer that type of detail.
Thank you. As part of the OMB decision to bring the lands into the urban boundary, it was required that prior to development, a secondary plan study would be carried out for the area. In carrying out the secondary plan, we are conforming to the urban Hamilton official plan, which already has densities that are approved for the low and medium densities that we're providing in the secondary plan. And for medium dense, would you like to know the densities that are proposed?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, I understand our urban official plan set out the densities, you know, downtown Hamilton is 250, as I recall. Can you just enunciate what some of those densities are so that people?
Yes. We are required for greenfield developments to meet, achieve a density target of 70 people and jobs per hectare. For low-density two, which we have proposed in our plan, it's 20 to 40 units per hectare. Low-density three is 40 to 60, and the medium-density three or two that we'd be bringing forward would be 60 to 75 units per hectare.
And, Mr. Mayor, what was the required density then for Scooby?
The required density would have been 70 people and jobs per hectare for Scooby.
And the original plan that was brought forth by staff hit what density?
73.
And the modification to go from MDR three to MDR two, which is medium-density residential three, which was a six-story height restriction, down to MDR two, which brings us down to a four-story height restriction? What's the change in the density now for that particular area?
70.
So we're now at 70, which is the approved density that we, as a council, already voted on?
Yes.
With regards to the four-story buildings that is, currently has been approved by the planning committee and is now is the recommendation before this committee, can you clarify the, what's the proximity of the buildings to each other? They're four-story buildings. Are they lined up together like one wall? Roughly, where are they in the Scooby secondary plan?
The proposed four-story would be permitted on the south side of Barton Street, and it takes, they're all forms of multiple dwellings, so you would get block towns, triplex, quadruplexes, and apartment buildings up to four stories. So they wouldn't be a wall of buildings. They don't have to be facing onto Barton Street as well. They could be north-south. It depends on what the size of the property and how they're able to meet the densities and the forms that would be permitted.
So we're not talking for apartment buildings necessarily? We're just talking for developments that would have a limit of four stories?
Yes, it's a limit of four stories, but it ranges from block towns up to four-story apartments. So it could be any of those combinations. It's whatever the market dictates and whatever applications come in.
Okay. And with regards to the tender fruit lands that the farmers are clearly concerned that there's going to be pressure on them to sell those lands, we understand the green belt takes effect. Are those tender fruit lands protected with the green belt, or are they eligible now to be developed under the secondary plan?
Those tender fruit farms are within the green belt plan, and they are protected under that plan. They are also rural, so they're not in the urban boundary. There's no development proposed for those lands. All the developments proposed within the secondary plan is within the urban boundary.
And last question, Mr. Mayor. Does the city expropriate land and houses off of people for development?
It is my understanding that they do not.
Quick comments. I really feel for what councillor Johnson's been going through. I think this is a secondary urban boundary expansion that took on a lot of political heat from some specific people in the area who started to inform residents that their property was going to be expropriated. The little houses that they had bought and paid for and lived in for 50, 60 years was going to be expropriated by the big bad city. There were signs on properties throughout the entire community. That's how vociferous the opposition became. And when you dig into the opposition, the opposition wasn't so much about the houses being expropriated, it was about a road closure on Fruitland that they allege was promised many, many decades ago. So the people who were upset with that road not being closed took the opportunity to ratchet up, and I'm using the term deliberately, ratchet up, throw gas on the fire for the residents in Winona and Fruitland, that their houses were going to be expropriated and big bad box stores and everything else is going through the neighborhood, that if your house is on land that's designated as a future school zone, they're going to take your house away from you, and you're going to be homeless. This was terms they were using to the residents. I kid you not. And in my entire life in public, I have never experienced that much misrepresentation and deliberate deception to the residents in a communion, in a community. It was very frustrating to see it. We challenged the people who were leading the group and I think correctly admonished them for their behavior. The challenge that councillor Johnson has is a lot of this happened long before her taking the role as councillor. This process was long underway before that. The challenge for me, when I'm looking at this, I'm not seeing a high density in this plan. I'm seeing low density. And when it's MDR two, it's not a significant amount of density. We're talking 70. Downtown, Stony Creek's 110. We're not talking about recreating downtown Stony Creek in Winona. It's still going to be a livable community, a walkable community. The challenge is, quite candidly, is those heights on those buildings, and it remains to be seen what the study comes back and says. I'm not convinced that a four-story duplex or triplex is going to create that issue. Apartment buildings, I agree. If it was a wall of apartment buildings, like along Mimico or things like that, yeah, you've got an issue. I don't think that's what's in the plan. I know that's not within the plan. And I, we deliberately moved a motion to amend it to MDR two so that our staff could support it if it went to an OMB, that we didn't have to hire outside staff and hire outside planning consultants. It was a compromise. I think a lot of the people understood it in the Winona area. I understand that there's still concerns. In their minds, they're going to see these big apartment buildings coming, and I don't see that happening at all, because at the end of the day, it's still market-driven. And so if the developers don't have that, it's not going to happen. So I'm comfortable with where we are, but I wanted to make it very clear that councillor Johnson has done a yeoman's job of trying to explain this to the public, to the point where a report will be going out to them in about a month's time, acknowledging exactly what is going to happen to clarify any of the misconceptions. With that, I'll take the chair back.
And would you add to your list, Mr. Deputy Mayor, councillors Pearson and Jackson?
Thank you. Councillor Pearson and Jackson are first-time speakers, and councillor Farr. Councillor Pearson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and, you know, I was going to sit back and just see where this all fell tonight. Certainly, as a councillor next door to councillor Johnson, I have to agree councillor Johnson has done a phenomenal job in trying to quell the concerns of all of the community and working with them, working with staff, working with development proponents, to trying to come to something that everybody could accept. And, Ms. Chairman, you're correct. At the meeting, you handled it very well as the chair with regards to admonishing concerns that were raised and issues that were raised with the community that created friction that wasn't needed to be there. And we all know, I mean, I know I've suffered with that for many years, and I've learned to just step back and just keep doing what I should be doing. So I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, listening to all the comments, and you're right, it was a very long day, but certainly very interesting, listening to all the comments, I have to remember, and one of the comments that jumped out in presentations with Mr. Jack Ristival, lawyer and developer, and his comment was, with regards to the high-rise proposal, that it was absolutely ingenious of staff to place these units where they did, because he felt that by doing what was done, we've not only met the provincial policy statement, but they will probably never go where they're proposed. Developers won't build there in that form. So, you know, with that being said, that's not carved in stone, and we know that, and we understand that. I supported going down to the four-story, MDR two, and I understand absolutely what councillor Johnson's concerned with. But I think I mentioned at the meeting that, you know, my years as a councillor in Stony Creek and moving into Stony Creek in 1984, development pretty well was a block away from me, beginning. So I was in an old established area, and development on Macintosh, moving easterly, was just starting. So the whole ward pretty well developed in the time that I've been there. And I'll tell you, I don't believe that anything has been set that was according to the secondary plan. We had many, many redevelopment applications, more intensification, obviously, when the provincial policy statement came down for intensification, we all know that very well in the mid-'90s, early and mid-'90s, issues with the Red Hill, we had a lot of things that were on the table that we had to address, and that, and the boundary being on the east side of Fruitland Road. So a lot of things have come, a lot of concerns that were raised the day here with the public and have been raised over the time period since 2007 with regards to what can be built there. Mr. Deputy Mayor, you know that I have high-rises in my ward, a few of them, and I spoke, you know, very clearly that in Ward 10 on the north side of the Kiwi W, right on the waterfront, there was a strip of land from pretty well Francis Avenue to Millen Road, that was, or actually, Green Road to Millen Road, that was proposed in the '70s by a township of Saltfleet. Didn't come under a secondary plan. It was a plan that they just put on the books for 13 high-rise towers. I'll say it again, 13 high-rise towers. Two came to fruition, and the rest never, never evolved. Until recently, 2010, we have Green Mill and Shores development, that I have over 1,100 units coming. Two potential high-rises with commercial on the first floor, and I'm hearing now possibly a third. But they're very far between because there's no money, and it's very expensive. I'm dealing with the condo corporations now on the two existing towers, and the money they have to put in to maintain these buildings after 20, 30, and 40 years is a huge pot, and they all have to pay for that because they're condominium. So we have that. I have issues on Number Eight Highway. We have seven-story. I have a seven-story residential condo that was just approved across from St. Francis Church. Ideal location, and these are where we want them, and this is where it occurs on Barton Street. This is your intensified strip of area that's going to be developed. So I just, you know, want to be sure that we put forward, and I think the last comment I raised at the meeting was, to everyone, make sure you keep a copy of this plan. If it goes to the Ontario Municipal Board, keep a copy of that plan. And when the development's all done, see how much of it met the original plan, because I think that we may be worrying about things. What we really need to be more worried about is when redevelopment applications come forward. So with that being said, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I do support the four-story, and I think councillor Whitehead has mentioned, and I know because this happened in my ward, that usually on the fourth story, it's probably unitary equipment, heating and air conditioning, that is generally considered the fourth of a floor on a building. So, I mean, the impacts may not seem as much as is being feared. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Councillor Jackson, please.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just briefly, and I stayed, even though being a non-voting member of planning committee, I stayed for a couple hours to hear staff's presentation, hear a couple of the original presenters. So... hear a couple of the original presenters. So I just want to say as well, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in my opinion, she may not feel this way, but Counselor Johnson has already had a victory to a degree that the staff recommendation of six stories, committee by majority heard her and reduced it to four, even though I'm hearing tonight she would ideally prefer three or maybe preferably no apartment buildings, period. But I'm already feeling on her behalf that Counselor Johnson and her integrity and credibility has already carried a lot of weight in the reduction from what staff had recommended. And like many have said around this table, she's inherited this situation. So she's been so open-minded, and I've watched her in her two and a half years on council, be available and accessible to any constituent that wants to meet with their blocks of people and/or small groups and/or single people, individual people. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm I'm having a hard time. Well, I won't play the Tom Jackson broken record of intensification's going to come back to bite different parts of this community and council, because there were members of council and members of this community who have rushed into places to grow and said, oh, it's just the most wonderful thing to do, and we need to do that. And boy, I hear tonight, there's conflict, and it's unfortunate. And gee, you know, this intensification thing may not be everything it's cut out to be, and we've got a farmer situation with tender fruit farms and things like that. I'm having difficulty as a layman, I'm not trying to be facetious, understanding tender fruit farmers' concern about one story. If I've I've misinterpreted or misunderstood, forgive me, but if I'm hearing correctly, comments made, one story could make the difference on the tender fruit farm situation. So I'm having a difficulty understanding how one floor is going to possibly make that kind of a difference. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Tim McCabe, General Manager. Tim, if the density doesn't even go ahead with the four-stories and given places to grow, is this one of those things where other parts of the city, parts of Flambro, Lancaster, downtown Hamilton, whatever, would possibly hypothetically have to make up some difference? Help me understand that it's not a member of Planning Committee. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you.
Thank you, Counselor.
To Tim.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So that's correct. So as part of the places to grow, we have to have an average of the seventy persons per hectare and jobs per hectare. So we have to make it up elsewhere. So the only, and this is in the green field situation. So this secondary plan is not necessarily an intensification. It's a new urban greenfield position. So you'd probably be looking at at higher densities in the O'Frida area as our first shot at the higher densities to make this up. So just one thing, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that this four-stories barely makes it to the medium-density category. We're not talking high-rise, high-density at ten, fifteen stories as Counselor Pearson makes it. These are four-story buildings at the maximum. You may not even see it built out like that. And these types of units and these types of dwellings, we need it for the growing demographics, too, where you have seniors' apartment buildings so people can live in the same area that they grew up. So you need that diversity of dwelling types within the same area.
Thanks for the response, Tim. So just to summarize, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in my humble opinion, Counselor Johnson has already had a victory in reducing six to four. I'm going to stay with the majority feeling of the Planning Committee and stay with what's here before us tonight. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And just to clarify, Mr. McCabe, you indicated places to grow was an average of seventy. I thought places to grow was fifty. And it's seventy for.
Oh, hang on, I'm sorry. No, it's no, it's fifty. But in our growth centers, it's two-hundred, but we raised it to two-fifty in our downtown. Sorry, it's fifty.
Thank you. Just want to make it clear so that there's no confusion later on. Counselor Farr, please.
Yes, and just to to echo some of the comments, but also add off the top that, you know, we've recognized that we're meeting targets still, given the change that we made. And I moved the motion to go from the MDR3 to the MDR2, wherever we saw both in the original plan. And as it's been labeled a compromise, I feel the same here tonight. And of course, during our ten-hour planning session on this very important issue, it did get the time and attention it deserved. And Counselor Johnson actually did a tremendous job, not only during this planning session, this committee meeting, but also, obviously in advance, it goes without saying, and did inherit quite an incredibly complicated and delicate file, and has been dealing with and continues to deal with and will continue to deal with the whole cast of different characters with different personalities and so forth because of the seriousness and the delicate nature of the issue. So with that, so with the MDR2, what we haven't heard tonight is, we did hear we meet our targets, but under that umbrella, the population target was, going into the committee, fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty, and the unit count was five thousand eight hundred and sixty. That was with the MDR3 and MDR2. And with the motion we passed at council and the one here tonight, going to MDR2, which is the four stories or less, the density in in that entire catchment area of MDR3 and MDR2, we now go to a population total of fifteen thousand four hundred and four, from fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty to a unit count that's actually a little higher, five thousand nine hundred and seventy-six. And I think it's important to recognize that. And very quickly, those folks who took the time to spend a day with the Planning Committee on the important issue, the stakeholders, and of course, staff, and Alyssa Mahood, who's actually here as well tonight, has been working through this secondary plan issue for many years. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Farr. Counselor Ferguson, and then Mayor Bertina.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to explain that I don't envy what Counselor Johnson's going through. I did the same thing with the Wilson Street Secondary Plan, and you get beat up in every direction of the same. And it's very difficult to find the right middle ground that's good perks for everyone. So it's probably one of the more difficult issues that Counselor Johnson's going to have to deal with in this term. Fifteen thousand people is a lot of new people coming into your ward. And, you know, managing the expectations of all the parties is not easy. But a question through you, Mr. Chairman, first of all, to Counselor Johnson, during your opening comments, I wasn't clear where you are going to, your motion is going to take us. Is it going to be simply to amend the recommendation to limit to three floors? Or are you going to recommend that we just deny it? Deny the whole thing?
Thank you. Counselor Johnson, please.
The reason that I did leave it the way it was is I just wanted to let people know why I was opposing it. And if the committee at their will, if you want to oppose it with me, then all for you. If we could get it down to three stories, as what the fruit farmers were asking for, but I also had other issues about the community park. I also had other issues about the Collector Road. So I'm leaving it up to you, which ones you want to go with. I want to get it down to three stories. I want to break up the park, and I want to get the Collector Road in stone, and absolutely in cement. I believe, in my opinion, the residents not only need the direction, they need to understand where all this is coming from and where there's going to be a road next to their house or beside their house, but they deserve to know. And they have never gotten a straight answer yet. So those are the issues, and these are why I'm, in part, opposing the plan.
So, okay, so I take it that your motion is going to be simply to deny the application of the whole plan, and which I have a little trouble with because we're going to the board, and that'll cost a ton of money. But just on that issue, through you, Mr. McCabe, Tim, I heard you say the staff would be prepared to support to go from six floors to four floors, but not three. Does that mean if we go to the board, and council takes a position of three floors, which is one of the asks, one of the key asks, our planning staff would then testify against council? They would not be supportive of council's position?
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. McCabe, please.
Yeah, so, Mr. Deputy, what would probably happen, the developers that are already feeling aggrieved with the reduction, they're going to subpoena us, and we're going to have to stay with our support and planning justification for the six stories. So we're going to go back to the six stories under oath. So we would not be supporting the three stories.
Okay, let me ask a question again in a different way. If if this gets appealed to the board and council takes a position to support three floors, will we have to hire outside planners to represent that?
Yes, you would. Yes, you would.
Okay. And that seems to be the key issue. And I know it's difficult for Counselor Johnson, particularly when you've got people putting a lot of misinformation out there, particularly around expropriation. And I know we all took a pretty good sweep with those people for passing that along because we don't expropriate for development, and made that pretty clear. So I, any idea through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. McCabe, this thing I suspect is going to board, most secondary plans do, official plans do, somebody always doesn't like what you're doing, and it'll probably be appealed. If we took a position of three floor, any idea what it costs us to hire outside planners to represent that position versus using our own planners? Mr. McCabe?
Well, Mr. Deputy Mayor, if it's just on that one issue, including prep time and hearing time, you know, maybe twenty thousand?
Oh, that's not so bad. I was expecting here four hundred thousand. You know, so twenty thousand dollars. Okay, I want to think about this some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor Bertina, please.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll be supporting Counselor Johnson. The previous mayor did a resident survey, and over sixty percent were not in favor of any urban boundary expansions. And when we talk about intensification, all you have to do is look out that window. There's a twenty-five-story building going up there, and next to it, a fifteen-story building, residential buildings. And we cannot discount the evidence of our agricultural sector. And I'll give you an example of how climate can, microclimates can change. I've been going to Niagara Falls all my life. The grandmother lived there. I was every other weekend around Niagara Falls. Niagara Falls was once featured by a kind of a romantic mist. You go there, and there's that spray off the falls, but it's kind of a mist. And for the last twenty years, the mist has become heavy globules of water. And I talked to a scientist at the University of Guelph who's actually studying the problem. And the problem arose from all the big hotels that were built on the top of the ridge overlooking the falls, which has caused condensation of that romantic mist into, so you virtually get soaked to the skin when you walk by the falls these days, which was not typical over the decades that we went there. So whatever the issues are with regard to the microclimate, I think they are profound. We thought we could fix a creek in Red Hill, and apparently we didn't do a good job on that. We've had all sorts of floods in the last little while. Are they related to, you know, planning protocols? I don't know. But I'm not sure we know enough right now to dismiss the evidence of the agricultural sector. And so I'll support Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have Counsel Powers, Counsel Persuda, Counsel McCady, Counsel Whitehead, Counsel Johnson for a second time. I still don't have any amendments before us, so I'm looking for direction because we could debate it all night. Counsel Powers?
Minus questions through, and perhaps to you, or perhaps you could direct them for me. So for my clarity, is the issue that Counselor Johnson is referring to is Section H in the recommendation? Is this correct?
That is correct.
And could I please have an interpretation, a clear interpretation of what H says, please?
Yep. We needed that mission.
Does it say it's a.
MDR2, what the types of buildings are.
The the change from the medium-density residential three to the medium-density residential two is not in the form, it is in the density and the height. So you will be getting a six, sixty-five, sorry, sixty to seventy-five units per hectare, and only four stories in the change in the medium-density two, as opposed to sixty to a hundred units per hectare and six stories. So the forms remain the same. It's it still permits block towns, triplex, quads, and apartment buildings, as well as local commercial on the ground floor.
Okay, so the clarity is, it's, as you've indicated, body reduction in height to bring it down to a four-story structure?
Yes.
Through you, sir, procedurally, is if I was to support, want to support the balance of the recommendations in the report, could I signify opposition to H exclusively?
Yes.
The Counselor Johnson is asking for a standard recorded vote on the whole thing. So procedurally, how I would, how would I handle that, please?
I'm not clear that that's what Counselor Johnson was asking for. It's my interpretation that she was asking for a standing recorded vote on H, which is medium-density. A clarification.
What I wanted was, I was going to oppose this this plan in part, and that was the density, the community park, and the Collector Road A. So there are three different separate issues on this that I that I'm opposed to. If we want to narrow it down to the three-story right now, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, I I'm just trying to help. We have item four before us. We have numerous items in item four. The density item is specific to item H on page three of twenty. So my assumption was that you were opposed to that. And you're wanting that to be amended to three stories? So then at the appropriate time, I'm hoping Counselor Johnson would make that motion, and then the committee can make their decision, the council can make their decision accordingly. We can sever out specific items as opposed to voting against the entire plan.
So I'll count on your learned direction to take us through the process, sir.
I hope I get it right. And I have Counsel Persuda. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Duvall is first time. Sorry, I didn't hear the, you got to tinkle louder.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you, just to the Counselor, so if I'm hearing right, even after the meeting, there was a compromise. You were still willing to take the chance from going from a three-story to a possible six, even though you got a compromise of four?
I think what he's asking you is that if it get appeals, if it get appeals to the, if there's an appeal to the OMB, we have no control, and it could go back up to six. So are you willing to take that gamble? I'm paraphrasing.
Yes, and I thank you, Mr. Deputy. The reason why I say that is just from my own experience in my ward, where I had the same problem with intensification, trying to make an agreement with the developer and getting it reduced down to something from twelve to nine. And the people said, no, they want it seven. Elba went to the OMB, and he got the whole twelve.
And through you, Deputy Mayor, when I met with the landowners and the landowners who came to speak at the at the podium, all said the same thing, that they weren't interested in building four- to six-story apartment buildings, they're not cost-effective. And if I can also take another elephant out of the room, I'm not opposed to apartment buildings in my ward at all. We have, I have, my ward goes right up to Rymal Road, and I got an application last week for townhouses on Rymal Road. To me, that's where we should be putting the high intensity. So but that's another issue. So I'm not against apartment buildings. I have them in my ward, and they serve a purpose. It's not the issue. It's the height restriction that I have a problem with.
I understand.
Counsel Duvall.
I'm just trying to get some clarification that you're fighting for three floors, you have four, but you could lose this whole thing and go to, and have six. That's all I'm asking, I'm suggesting. So knowing that our, just a comment, Mr. Deputy Mayor, knowing that what our staff has said that they couldn't support, that even gives me further trouble of where we're going here. So I just want to make that as a comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Duvall. A first-time speaker, Counsel Partridge.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And through you to Tim. Tim, on that, on that same Section H, could you please clarify what is the difference in the actual height meters-wise between four and six-story?
Thank you.
So it's typically ten feet per floor. So you'd have twenty feet would be the difference, or six meters.
So that would be, all right, so that would be twenty between the four and the six. So can I assume then, through you, Deputy Mayor, that the difference between three and four would be the ten feet?
Mr. McCabe?
So that's three meters?
Three meters, but you would be dropping down. We pointed this out at Planning Committee, Mr. Deputy Mayor. You'd be dropping down to a low-density category. So you'd be knocking out the potential for ground-floor commercial as well. So it starts to have an effect on the product as well. Because nobody's going to build commercial on one floor and two stories of residential. You'll see no commercial then.
And I understand that we did talk about it at planning, but for the benefit of the people around this table who weren't at planning, and the benefit of those who are watching, I appreciate the answer to the question because it's an important question to ask. And so I wouldn't support the six-story at the Planning Committee, but we did put the motion through, and I did support it to go to the four-story. Because my understanding was, the difference that we're talking about is three meters. So that's three meters between the three-story and the four-story. And, you know, I, I'd like to ask a question, Deputy Mayor, through you, to the Counselor of the ward, because I'm living the results of that and watering down what's happening right now with all the buildings. So, you know, I very much respect where you're where you're coming from and what you're having to deal with and what you're going to have to deal with. So my question is, knowing that the difference we're dealing with is three meters, through you, Deputy Mayor, would you still be opposed to that with the three meters? Would you still be opposed to the four-story and really want the three? Because what I'm, and, you know, what I'm concerned about is we are going to the OMB, and my. going to the OMB. My understanding with the motion that was passed for the four stories, the staff will support the four stories at the OMB. And if that's not correct, I'll come back and ask that question to Mr. McCabe. So through you, to the councillor, would you, would you be able to accept that?
Councillor Johnson?
Instead of the three stories, going with the four stories, which could be supported at the OMB?
In my opinion, the tender fruit farmers are asking for three-story maximum, and that's where I'm standing behind, is the fruit farmers who are asking for that height limit. So if I was to amend H, it would be with a three-story, sorry, with a height restriction of three stories.
Correct.
Okay, and that's fine. I wanted to clarify that, to see where your comfort zone was. Because my worry is that we're going to end up with six stories. And three, four stories would at least be a compromise to the three stories. But through you, just to confirm that, Deputy Mayor, to Mr. McCabe, would staff be supporting the four stories as directed by this council, if we approve this, or by the planning staff at the OMB? Or would you still under oath be going for the six-story?
Mr. McCabe?
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, at the committee, and in the spirit of compromise, without giving away and throwing away all our planning values, we were willing to support the committee's direction to reduce it from six to four stories, because we still allow for the building form, and the mixed commercial with it. So you drop down to three, we start losing some of the principles that we were trying to achieve. So at the board hearing, we would be, we have a report, that's a matter of the public record, supporting six stories as good planning.
Thank you. Councillor Partridge?
All right, thank you. So what I thought I heard, just to clarify, is that you would be supporting the six stories at the OMB?
He indicated that he would support what's before us as MDR two. That was a compromise, given the fact that mixed use is on the first floor, and three stories above. If we go to three stories, he loses mixed use, and he can't support that, because they lose their principles.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I do appreciate that. So those are my questions, if I may, a couple of comments?
Please.
I know, I was not part of the secondary plan for Water Down, but I'm certainly living it right now. We have seventeen thousand people who are coming into our community, and it's under extreme development. And we do not have our bypass. It's still being held up by the MOE, and it is an enormous problem. So whatever we can accomplish to assist this community, and I believe that they do need to have that ground-floor commercial in order to have those neighborhoods. We're talking about a four-kilometer stretch that could be wall-to-wall townhouses. So there is a need for some commercial development to be within that stretch. And we've heard that it can't be accomplished with a three-story limit, because you will lose that ground-floor commercial. And it doesn't mean that we're going to have wall-to-wall buildings. We also heard that, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So I can tell you down the road, I know what you're going to be dealing with, and I do, I feel for you. It's a terrible position to be in. You're a first-time councillor, but you have done an amazing job, and my hat goes off to you, lady. Okay? So I will be supporting this at the four stories, as we did talk about at the planning committee. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Partridge. Councillor Pursuta, councillor McCady, and councillor Pearson, I have you as second-time speakers. I'm going to ask if you're willing to yield to councillor Johnson, so we can get an indication where she wants to go on the amendments. It's up to you. You don't have to. You're the first one, councillor Pursuta.
Well, I would like to add a little bit more to what I spoke to before.
Please feel free.
If I may, councillor Johnson? Okay, so, thank you, Deputy Mayor Clarke. So here's some food for thought, and hopefully we find some value in this. So we talked about the air drainage. But on top of that, you're doing agriculture, agricultural operation, there's noise, the equipment, the tractors, the moors, the sprayers, possibly air blast sprayers. We have bird cannons to scare off the birds. They're propane-powered, and they bang every so often. They're trying to scare the birds off, so they don't damage the fruit that's almost ready to pick. We have dust. We have early morning noise, late evening noise. Farmers get out there to do their spraying, to do their work on these crops. With increased intensification, we have increased population. Increased population creates more complainants. We have more trespassing issues. We have more pilfering of products, theft of fruits, more walkthroughs. And as councillor Johnson knows, the potential of more ATVs to do more damage to cropland. So it's some food for thought. Like I said, I hope we get some value out of this, but increased intensification, I repeat again, increased population, more complaints. It's greenbelted land in that area. We're going to go intensify right in front of the farmland. We need to protect that. So that's on top of the air drainage. And potentially even, water drainage of these lands, too, is another issue. So I'll leave it at that, and I hope we've gained something from my few comments. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor Clarke.
Thank you, councillor Pursuta. Councillor McCady, please.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a quick question to planning staff, because I wasn't at the, I was not on planning committee. If I can ask, why wasn't a study done ahead of time, which evaluated, it was an impact study, I guess is what I'm talking about, on the tender fruit land, that clearly identified the various heights that could be supported? From the perspective of protecting the tender fruit lands, which I continue, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to say should be the paramount interest, in terms of a planning interest in this particular area, why wasn't that study done ahead of time versus the approach that has been taken, that the development is approved at a certain density, that the committee has identified the four stories as per the amendment, along with individual, with studies going on, the block studies and that kind of stuff? My experience is, once planning is approved, and studies are done, the studies can generally support the development. I'm sorry if I'm a bit jaded on that, given my experience in planning matters. But why wasn't the study done ahead of time, so we wouldn't have this discussion tonight? We would say, you know, what, four stories in this configuration? It's going to protect the tender fruit land? Or tell you what, you need three stories, and here's why. Why wasn't that done, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, councillor McCady. McCabe, I believe.
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, not being part of the entire study, but this is a very expensive study, for one thing, probably hundred thousand plus. So you got to know the final grades, you got to know the final details of the block servicing, in order to get the type of detail, in terms of grades, to enter into the study parameters. But the impact and the result is exactly the same as what councillor McCady is asking for. You can't have any development, can't have any zoning. You can't determine the final things until this thing is studied by professionals and approved. So that's not a great answer to the question. I think it is a good question, but I think the final result is going to be the same.
Thank you, Mr. McCabe. Councillor McCady?
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I would just say, I always much prefer studies done ahead of time, before the development decision is taken. I find the approval with conditions, conditions to do studies in this case, is always, the environment, or the tender fruit lands in this case, never wins in that situation. I think it's the wrong way to go about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Pearson, second time.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and I apologize. I don't want to prolong this, but I really think it's important imperative, as councillor Partridge raised. The issue of height, that's the concern tonight, a four-story. Maybe I'd like to ask staff for clarification. We keep speaking of four-story. Is there a maximum height on that, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Alyssa? Do we have that, or is it just classified as story? So we don't have a definite height? Different than what we have for single-family residential, which is eleven meters maximum, thirty-three feet, correct?
Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. It's stories. We do put a maximum height on stories, and through the zoning bylaw, then that would be determined in meters as to what that is.
So that will come as we progress on this. Once it's approved, we'll have an indication of where that, what that demarcation will be, correct?
And once it's approved, we still have to do that block servicing strategy before anything, any development can proceed. And that would determine the grades, the layout of the streets, the air drainage will all be addressed on a block-by-block basis. And there's three blocks that will be, have to be looked at holistically. So prior to any development within the area. So until that's done, we won't know exactly what will come out of that, the types of development and the zoning bylaw requirements.
Right. Thank you very much. And I, just putting it in context of, a two-story, single-family residential home is the maximum height in our zoning bylaw of eleven meters, correct? Thirty feet, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct? Thirty, thirty-five feet. Right? Thank you. I was never good at metric. And the other one, I just wanted to be sure, because it was stated, and I think, Alyssa, you raised it at planning committee, the issue, if we go down to less than four stories, it precludes and affects the potential for the ground-floor commercial, which we are really encouraging. And that was an issue that residents had asked, some residents had asked, because of the major commercial complex with the Walmart, that they've lost a lot of neighborhood commercial. And this will actually achieve it. And I know, I remember you speaking about that. So could you just clarify?
Yeah, that is correct. Throughout our process, we heard from the community that they wanted opportunities for local commercial. And because of the preapproval of the large-format retail at the QEW and fifty, our studies indicated that that, it wouldn't be viable to have another node. So permitting the local commercial on the ground floor would be, would give the opportunity to have local commercial within walking distance for those people.
Right. Thank you very much. And I know it's been raised, I mean, we want to try and create walkable communities, and that's why this density is created on Barton Street. It's the transit hub. It's the pedestrian walkway promenade. So all of these things were factored in for that. Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you for the indulgence. I will be supporting the four-story that staff can support at the OMB. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pearson. Back to councillor Johnson.
Thank you, everyone, for all your comments, and thank you for your input and all this. I'm still going to remain firm that I believe that the three-story is the fruit farmers have asked us to abide by, and it was a maximum height of three stories. I've got three-story apartment buildings up in Benbrook. The ground floor is commercial, so it can be done. So I would like to amend the H for, to amend at the very end of sentence, that would say with a height restriction of three stories. I believe councillor McCady was seconding that with me.
Height restriction of three stories.
Right. So we can still do, anyway, we can still do commercial on the bottom floor, just like we do in Glanbrook.
And it was seconded by councillor McCady? Any comments or questions on the motion, on the amendment? Sorry, councillor Partridge. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And through you to Mr. McCabe, with that amendment to that part of the motion, and we've heard what the good councillor just said, about Benbrook having the three-story with the ground-floor commercial, will that be permitted here as well?
McCabe?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, if you keep the medium-density residential two, and just put that as a special regulation, having a maximum three-story height, the uses will stay the same. Whether you get commercial, I don't know, but it certainly would lower the potential of commercial on the ground floor.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I have councillor Farr. No comment. Thank you. Councillor Whitehead, you had a question?
Yeah, my question is, and I'm really concerned about the risk. I heard this, farmers want three stories, and that's it, and councillor Johnson is supporting that. What I don't know, though, is that the farmers recognize, by doing this, you can end up with six stories, and do they know that's the risk? Because I think that's a key question. If they're not aware of the risk, then I think we're in a different dynamic here. So I would ask councillor Johnson, do the farmers understand, by sticking to the three stories, that there's a risk that we'll end up with six?
Councillor Johnson?
I believe the farmers are feeling the same way I am. Last spring, there was a thaw that happened on their blossoms. They got an instant freeze and lost millions, not thousands of dollars, but millions of dollars' worth of produce, because of the buildup on, partly from the end of Winona, which is Grimsby, all the way down to Niagara Falls. So I would think, they would come after us and say, do what you can to make this possible in our area. So that's what I'm feeling. Staff said they could support the four-story. Well, we go to the OMB, it ends up being four-story, it ends up being four-story. But at least we should give it a shot, and let the farmers know that we're there to help them protect their produce and their livelihoods.
Councillor Whitehead?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I think what I'm hearing, though, is that they will support four. But what happens, it opens it up at the OMB to six, because that was the staff's original recommendation. Because the four really comes off the table, because we're supporting three, which they can't support. That's the dynamics that takes place at the OMB. And that's what concerns me, is that the heart's in the right place, but tactically and strategically, you could end up with something is even more, have more impact than the compromise that's been reached here today. And that's why, as much as I understand it, my concern is, is that we could end up in a place we don't want to be in, period. And so that's why I need, I will be supporting the four stories.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Powers, question? Put the question. Thank you. So it reads that subsection H of item four of the planning committee report thirteen zero zero nine, respecting fruitland, Winona Secondary Plan and Official Plan Amendments, and the Stony Creek Urban Boundary Expansion Subwatership Study, be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following, and lo thereof, item four H, that buildings no more than three stories in height be permitted in the fruitland Winona Secondary Plan, Official Plan Amendments, and the Stony Creek Urban Boundary Expansion. Correct? Thank you. The item has been put. It's a standing recorded vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please stand.
Mayor Bertina, councillors McCady, Johnson, Ferguson, Pursuta.
Thank you. All those opposed, please stand.
Deputy Mayor Clarke, councillors Whitehead, Duval, Jackson, Collins, Marula, Farr, Pearson, Powers, and Partridge.
The amendment was defeated. You have other additional amendments on the, or you're just going with the main motion now? Standing recorded, so a standing recorded vote has been requested on the main motion, which is recommendation number four. All those in favor, please stand. Oh, sorry, councillor McCady, please.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just following councillor Powers' comment earlier, if we're opposed to H, we would be in favor of the whole report, would we? And then we would just be noted as being opposed to H?
Yes, that's the quickest in-
So I shall stand at this moment?
You can stand if you're in favor of the whole report, and you're opposed to H at the appropriate time. All those in favor, please stand.
Deputy Mayor Clarke, councillors Whitehead, Duval, Jackson, Collins, Marula, Farr, McCady, Pearson, Ferguson, Powers, Partridge, and Mayor Bertina.
Thank you. And severing on H, all those opposed to H, councillor McCady, councillor Ferguson, councillor Pursuta, Mayor Bertina, and councillor Johnson. It's kind of a reverse of your amendment, but now they want to be recorded as being opposed to that specific clause, which is absolutely reasonable. Thank you. The item carries. We are now moving on to item five in your agenda?
Carry.
On item number six. On item number seven, councillor Farr, I understand you have an amendment to item number seven.
Yes, and it's before everybody here on item seven. This is the planning committee report thirteen dash zero zero nine, respecting report LS thirteen zero one nine, Urban Hamilton Official Plan for Post Settlement of Appeal by the TDL Group Corporation Inc., A&amp;W Food Services, and Canada Inc., McDonald's Restaurants, and Canada Limited Wendy's Restaurants of Canada Inc., and the Ontario Restaurant Hotel and Motel Association in legal direction, be deleted in its entirety and replaced with what is before us.
Thank you. Comments or questions on the item? All those in favor?
Carry.
Thank you. On item number eight.
Carry.
On item number nine, councillor Powers, I understand that you wish to defer item nine.
Yes, I do, Mr. Deputy Mayor. On a motion by myself, signed by councillor Pursuta, the motion is before you, is that we defer a council decision on this to no later than July the twelfth, twenty thirteen, meeting of council.
So that will come back July the twelfth? All those in-
Or sooner, sir.
Or sooner. Thank you. All those in favor?
Carry.
Thank you. Any opposed? Items carried. One second, please. Councillor Farr, you have a motion, I believe, on the main report?
I do move by myself, and seconded by councillor McCady, that the ninth report of the planning committee be adopted as amended in the information section received.
And all those in favor?
Carry.
Thank you. The General Issues Committee presents its twelfth report for two thousand thirteen zero twelve, and respectfully recommends item number one.
Carry.
Item number two.
Carry.
Item number three.
Carry.
Item number four.
Carry.
Item number five.
Carry.
Item number six. On number six, councillor?
I believe, Mr. Deputy Mayor, it's an appropriate time to just very briefly thank the many people who've contributed to, for our great debate with respect to an important issue, as it relates to our sustainability as a city, and that's that Arts Funding Task Force report. To all of those who did take the time for many years on the task force, related, of course, to the Arts Advisory Commission, thank you so much. I turn the committee's attention and the public's attention to page seventeen of twenty-two. As the result of the four-hour debate, this committee approved the following direction in its, the Arts Advisory Commission report, that many years devising, respecting strategic- in its, the Arts Advisory Commission Report that, many years devising, respecting strategic municipal investment in the arts, be referred to staff of the Planning Department for a report back to the General Issues Committee, which would provide details including implementation, budget implications, and impacts, and provide a range of options and alternatives, and that was double A and double B, was that staff be provided with the latitude to consult all appropriate staff and/or committees with respect to the governance and community partnership program issues, and that their input be incorporated to form part of the report referenced in subsection A. So thanks to all of my colleagues for all of the good questions, the great debate, the great presentation from the members of the Arts Funding Task Force, and I quite look forward to, in a timely fashion, and with respect to all of those issues related to this great Arts Funding Task Force report, staff's answer to those two items that we moved day of at G I C. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Farr. Counselor Whitehead, we're dealing with the letters in support.
Yes, and I want to thank, Mr. Chair, the, all those people and all the different disciplines with the arts that were consulted in this process. There's an old saying, and I always mess things up, I'm going to make an effort at it. And I think that is, if you continue doing things the same and expect a different result, then you're not, you know, you're not going to get a different result, quite frankly.
Fascinating, fascinating paraphrase of Einstein. I'm not sure he would have agreed with the term of-
I heard you now, next slide.
Counselor Bush?
I knew I'd mess that up. Anyway, the reality is, Mr. Chair, that when we take a look, we need to, and I know that we're reviewing the grants process, I know that we're reviewing how we facilitate the grants and the dollars to different organizations. I am interested in whether we can do something a little different and get different and better results. And so I am very open-minded to the concept that's been put before us. I know there's still some challenges, and the staff will be coming back and report. But I am open-minded, and I want to thank the arts community for their efforts to bring this forward.
Thank you. Item six.
Carry.
Thank you. Item number seven.
Carry.
Item number eight.
Carry.
Item number nine.
Carry.
Item number 10.
Carry.
Item number 11.
Carry.
Item number 12.
Carry.
Thank you. Mayor Bertina may have a motion on the main report, please.
By myself and seconded by Counselor Tom Jackson, that the 12th report of the General Issues Committee be adopted and the Information Section received.
All those in favor?
Carry.
Thank you. The Audit and Finance Administration Committee presents Report Number 13-006. And Counselor Pearson, you wanted to make some opening comments, as Chair, with regards to the native community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Deputy Mayor, and I appreciate that. Certainly, I mentioned that committee on Monday morning, that it's very few and far between where we have presentations at Audit and Finance. I mean, nobody, well, we don't really have. I've never received a check from anyone, so. But anyways, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you recall, you were at the meeting, that we had an extraordinary presentation that day. It was from the Aboriginal Advisory Committee, and they presented, actually, the city of Hamilton with eagle feather, which was an honor to hold, and I know it's being, is being stored here or maintained here at City Hall. And I just wanted to extend my thanks to Maxine Carter for all the work that she did, and the representatives from the Aboriginal, Hamilton Aboriginal Agencies, 10 of them that were represented and received certificates that day, and Marilyn Wright, who is the Chair of the committee, and Yvonne Miracle, also a member, were here to assist in presenting the certificates to recognize all their services and the amount of work that the, these various agencies do throughout the city of Hamilton. It was, it was an honor to be there and to hear the accolades that were stated by Marilyn Wright, but for each, for each of the groups and what they do. I just wanted to be sure that that got reiterated tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm sure they appreciate your comments. Counselors, item number one.
Carry.
Item number two.
Carry.
Item number-
Wait, wait. Sorry.
We're good to go?
All of these, I'm all good.
Okay, Counselor, or sorry, item number three.
Carry.
Item number four.
Carry.
Item number five.
Carry.
Item number six.
Carry.
Item number seven.
Carry.
Item number eight.
Carry.
Item number nine.
Carry.
Item number 10.
Carry.
Item number 11.
Carry.
Item number 12.
Carry.
Item number 13.
Carry.
Item number 14. Counselor Pearson, I understand you have an amendment to item number 14.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, that item 14 of the Audit and Finance and Administration Committee Report 13-006 be amended by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following and lo thereof, and the motion is before us.
Thank you. Everyone has it? All those in favor?
Carry.
Thank you. Counselor Pearson may have a motion on the main report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, that the sixth report of the Audit, Finance, and Administration Committee be adopted as amended in the Information Section received.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Thank you.
The Emergency and Community Services Committee presents Report 13-005 and respectfully recommends item number one.
Carry.
Item number two.
Carry.
Item number three.
Carry.
Item number four.
Carry.
Item number five.
Carry.
Item number six.
Carry.
Item number, that's it. Counselor Whitehead, I need a motion on the report, please.
Chair, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Scott DeValle, that the fifth report of the Emergency and Community Services Committee be adopted and the Information Section received.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Carry.
Counselor Whitehead may have a motion, please, to rise and report.
You certainly can, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor DeValle, that the committee, the whole, rise and report.
All in favor?
Carry.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your chairmanship. And now we have motions. Counselor Marula, you wish to introduce your motion respecting the Hamilton Police Service Board Governance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's moved by myself, and it's seconded by Counsel Collins. Whereas, under the Police Services Act, the city of Hamilton is mandated to provide for adequate and effective police services. And whereas, the standards for police operations and police behavior are established by the province, and there are legislative protections ensuring oversight by the province and recourse to the Ontario Police Services Commission. And whereas, the police services budget constitutes a significant component of the city's annual operating budget, for which the public holds Hamilton City Council accountable. And whereas, following the model used for public health and emergency services, fire and ambulance, Hamilton City Council believes that the governance of the police services Hamilton should align to more accurately reflect this accountability. And whereas, under the current statutory regime, the Hamilton Police Service is governed by a seven-member police services board comprised three members of council, one council-appointed citizen, and three provincially-appointed citizens. And whereas, council believes that a change in the governance of the police services is fair, appropriate, accountable, and transparent. And whereas, council accepts and supports the key principles for police service governance, namely accountability and independence, and particularly accountability financially and operationally to the citizens served, and independence in the carrying out of law enforcement. And whereas, council supports a model where the Hamilton Police Service is governed directly by council, as is the case with a number of cities in Canada, such as Quebec City in Quebec, Fredericton, New Brunswick, and Charlottetown, Prince Edward Island. And whereas, council could alternatively support a model where the police services board is comprised exclusively of members of council, like the Hamilton Board of Health, or alternatively, some combination of councillors and citizens appointed by city council, as is the case with several cities in Canada, such as with the Edmonton, Alberta Police Commission, nine commissioners, all appointed by city council, a combination of councillors and citizens, the Regina, Saskatchewan Board of Police Commissioners, five commissioners, all appointed by city council, a combination of councillors and citizens, and the St. Jean, New Brunswick Board of Police Commissioners, seven commissioners, six appointed by council, and a combination of councillors and citizens, and one by the province and a citizen. And whereas, governance directly by council or by a police service board comprised of members of council and/or citizens appointed by council must, according to law, abide by and not interfere with the principle of independence for the police service in terms of law enforcement. And whereas, in terms of accountability, both financially and operationally, a police service should be prepared to answer to council and to the community in that there are protections for police service beyond a municipal council, namely to the province of Ontario Police Services Commission, such that any direct governance by city council or indirect governance by police services board comprised of members of council and/or citizens appointed by council would itself have oversight from the province. And whereas, the amalgamation of municipalities in the former region of Hamilton went worth into one city of Hamilton was in part recognition of the maturity and commitment to responsibility that an amalgamated city would have to its city council. And whereas, the province should respect the maturity and sense of responsibility and allow city council to provide governance to the police services directly through council by way of police services made entirely of a council-appointed citizens or a combination thereof, with such governance to be pursuant to the principles of accountability and independence and pursuant to any provincial regulations regarding the financing and operation of a police services. Therefore, be it resolved that the province of Ontario be requested to amend the municipal act and/or the Police Services Act, and/or enact special legislation to either enable the Hamilton Police Services Board to be governed directly by Hamilton City Council, or enable the Hamilton Police Services to be appointed by council and comprised entirely of city councillors, or a combination of councillors and citizens as council may determine. B, that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Hamilton Police Chief and the Hamilton Police Service, assuring that the city council will continue to respect, strongly support the police service under any form of governance, including abiding by the key principle of independence and law enforcement. That a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Premier, the Honorable Catherine Nguyen, and the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services, the Honorable Madeline Mueller, for consideration. And that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Leader of the Opposition, Tim Hudak, and Leader of the NDP, Andrea Horath, all Hamilton-area MPPs, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario seeking their endorsement. And if I could just briefly, firstly, thank everyone for their patience on that motion, but I think it was, as a result of its significance, it was incumbent of me to read it in its entirety, for those watching at home. Firstly. Secondly, I think it's important to recognize that this initiative, Mr. Mayor, started months ago. Regardless of what personality issues are going on, or what other peripheral issues are playing themselves publicly presently, there's no direct correlation between that and what this motion is. What this motion is all about, and where this motion was born, just to separate fact from fiction, is that during the budgetary process, and clearly, everyone recognizes my angst as it pertains to downloading. And we all know, and everyone that's received their bills in the mail surrounding taxation, for the first time, and I'm proud to say, as a result of the support I receive from this council, it clearly highlights that 20% of our budget is a direct result of downloading, that we have no control over. So throughout that particular component, that discussion, nearly $600 of what people pay in taxes in this city has nothing to do with the city council, and we can't control it. Frankly, we could decrease your taxes, or the people, the hard-working people of the city, by 20% if the province simply paid their bills. Having said that, when this discussion, and in conjunction with Counsel Morelli, and I worked very closely with him on this particular motion, and his two decades of experience in policing, it's important to recognize that we are in a situation where we now, we can add another 20% onto our budget, where that $140 million of policing budget comes to us for approval, but we have no true control over the number. Because of this arm, this arm-length governing body that we only, we appoint members to, but the majority are appointed by the province, which in essence, in many ways, just becomes another form of downloading. Over and above that, the insulting component, is that they have other means, through arbitration, which we always lose, to simply say to hell with city council, we're going to the province, and we get everything we want from the province. And that's been the case for decades. So it's a sham. It's a sham that I knock on doors every four years and say, I'm going to fight to get you more policing, or I'm going to fight to decrease your taxes. But half of our operating budget has nothing to do with me or anyone else around this table, and everything to do with the province. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a sham. And people are now recognizing it as being a sham. I've been singing this song for a lot, a lot of years, but I can assure you, it's rising up in the charts right now, and people are paying attention. And I, whether it be at the gym, or whether it be in the grocery stores, people are actually asking questions. And now that it's part of the bill, their tax bill, it's written clearly what we are in control of and what we're not in control of, they are now starting to understand. And that was generally the intent from day one. I can recall, it was just a few short years ago where, and I did this by design, and I remember being criticized, I launched an order motion to sue the province for that amount of money. And I did so to simply shake the issue and push the envelope to have people focused in on the initiative. And on the, on the fact that 50% of our operating budget, what we tax people for, we can't control. That is astounding. There's no other jurisdiction in Canada that can say the same thing. Frankly, there's no other jurisdiction in the entire Western Democratic Hemisphere that can say the same thing. It's wrong. It's broken. We need to fix it. This has nothing to do with Chief to Care at all. This has everything to do with a governance model that's broken from a downloading perspective, from the Police Act, which is outdated. And we've seen examples that I've highlighted in this motion, in other parts and jurisdictions throughout this country, where it is working and where it's more accountable than when we can go to the public and speak to the, to Mr. Joel Smith on the street and say, yes, we are in control of that. We can fix that. What do we tell them now? No, we're simply a rubber stamp to an unelected and unaccountable board, for the most part, the majority. Because we do have some members of council on there. But the majority are not elected, they're appointed by the province that has subjected us to 15 or 20 years of that downloading crisis. So we need to fix this, and we need to fix this sooner rather than later. And again, I need to emphasize clearly that this has nothing to do with any peripheral issues, and everything to do with the governance model, and ensuring that this elected body, when we send a message to that board of directors, that when we go door-to-door and run campaigns, that we can say that we do represent that amount, the largest amount, actually, $140 million. It has doubled since I've been on council in 13 years, doubled. There's no other department that's doubled to that extent. So I've never not supported the police budget. This was the first year ever, in 14 years, that I've not supported the police budget. And it was unfortunate, because I think we could have found a common ground, but other issues played to the, to the, to the actual conclusion of that, and that, to me, was saddening. Having said all of that, at the end of the day, when you have a thousand-member police association supporting council on an issue, and you have one representative of council, and you have the chief, and, and the elected, and then the appointed members of the province all on one side, but yet, the vast majority on the other side, there's something broken with that system. It should be the will of this council that directed that budget. And we will be held accountable come election time. If we really drastically make a decision that, that, that impairs the process, so be it. I'm willing to be held accountable. But at this point, I don't have that control. Hence, either move forward on ensuring it's all in the city of Hamilton, or simply divest ourselves entirely from it, like the school board. Because frankly, I'm not playing this, it's a charade. It's not real. We have no control over it. So we either bring it in-house, be accountable, be held accountable, have input, or let's just basically call it a day and divest ourselves entirely, set the board up and let them tax the public directly, because we're not doing it. But those who are listening at home, 50%, nearly 50% of our budget, or $1,200 per household, on the average of $3,000 per household, we have no control over. That's a system that's broken, that's a system that needs to be fixed, and I stand by that, and this is what this motion's all about, in conjunction with the downloading issues that I continue to fight. And I appreciate your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I have councillor Clark to speak.
Thank you. Pauline, your secondor, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I appreciate councillor Morella bringing forth his motion, and he actually gave us ample notice of the motion, which enabled us to actually reflect on it. Initially, when I received the motion, and I think it was Tom and I, initially, this is timely, given what we were dealing with on the budget, and I was actually, I actually had told councillor Morella that I would support it. The extra time gave me time to reflect on the governance model that's in place, the Police Services Act and a number of other things that are in place within the city. And I began to question why now? Why is this so significant that we have to jump at it now, given that the last, well, the Police Services Act was created in 1990, the most recent form of it? There were some new regulations that were done in 2010, but the gist of the Police Services Act has not changed. And so we're really talking about governance and having control over the amount of money that's being spent. I started to reflect on other organisations, for example, the Conservation Authority. Conservation Authority even has it better than the Police Department. Conservation Authority, under the Conservation Act, they get to levy the municipality. So they do their operational budget, they do their capital, and they actually have an opportunity to say, "Here's the tax increase for each of the municipalities that are a part of this Conservation Authority, and you have 30 days after the HCA actually passes that budget to decide whether or not you're going to oppose it." Not whether or not you can say, "No, we're not paying", whether or not you're going to oppose it, and if you're going to oppose it, you have to go to a commission and do this, the commission is with the Ministry of Natural Resources, and it's a long-drawn-out, councillor McCady will know this, as Chair of the HCA, protracted process with no reasonable expectation that a municipality will actually succeed in opposing the levy that's proposed by the Conservation Authorities. So one could say, "Well, we should be putting all councillors on the HCA." And I couldn't do that. I look back to the Terra landfill and it was the councillors who were actually supporting the landfill in the community, it was the citizens who were opposed to it. It was the citizens on the Conservation Authority who actually pushed for the environmental assessment process with the Conservation Authority. So there's this balance that we create on a number of these boards. I thought about public health, and it is mentioned in the actual motion somewhere, I have my glasses off now, so I'm not sure exactly where, but it is mentioned in the motion. I happen to believe public health would be more appropriate if there were all citizens on public health, if it was a separate body from the council. Frequently, we are asked to make decisions that are coming forth with professional recommendations from numerous doctors and health professionals, for example, on pain clinics where methadone is involved, and as opposed to agreeing with the professional health, we say no because it's politically untenable to say yes to a methadone clinic in your community regardless of what the doctors say and how effective it is. It's, you know, we've had other issues, needle exchanges was another one that our health professionals came forward with. So there's been a number of issues that public health have come forward with that as councillors, we have to think with two hats. Are we the public health board member now or are we the city councillor? And if I'm the city councillor, I'm thinking with the elected hat, I'm not thinking with the public health hat, which is what Dr Richardson is responsible for. So when I considered that, then I went back to the Police Services Act and I started to look at the responsibilities under the Police Services Act. Council, being in a position where we have to establish policing levels across the city as opposed to what the chief is saying, so you imagine the police chief coming in and making recommendation on policing in his community, which is his responsibility under the Act, his sole responsibility under the Act, and now we're going to have councillors say, "Yes, Mr Police Chief, but we don't agree. You're going to have less police officers, you're going to have less cars." There was, if you go to, I was struck by a municipality in Ontario that was taking challenge by the Police Association because they had decided that they weren't going to have the big, larger police cruisers, they were going to have the smaller vehicles like a smart car kind of thing, and they were challenged on it. The council wanted to do it because it made sense, it saved money, but the police chief and the Police Association challenged it and the council lost. So I don't know what is really broken in the system. This is the first time since I've been on council where council has said no to a direct increase that was requested by the Police Services Board. I look back over the last 20 years, significant increases, some of them double what we dealt with this year, and there was no opposition to those increases. We relied on the professional experience of the police chief to provide advice in terms of what's going on. I understand that there was concern about the number of new police officers that was being proposed, and there's concern over whether or not the action team or whatever he calls it is inappropriate use. I don't have the experience to tell the police chief whether or not the action team is working or not. I don't have the experience to tell them whether or not his homicide squad is doing their job. I don't have any of that experience. I look at the financial numbers and I ask questions. That's what I was interested in. I asked for the exact, I mean, I found it fascinating, the Police Services Board actually approved it without the actuals in front of them. Far be it from me to challenge that, but I would have expected that we would have had the actual figures, expenditures. We didn't have that. I understood, you know, what their explanation was, I didn't agree with their explanation. And I voted against the budget based on I didn't have enough information. But I really don't understand what is now broken in this system that was not broken for the last 13 to 20 years. I don't see it. We had an argument over the fee with the chief. I don't see why we're now going to take this argument that we're having with our police chief to the provincial level and ask the Attorney General and the Solicitor General to get involved and consider changing the Police Services Act specifically for Hamilton, given that I don't know of any other municipalities in Ontario that are complaining about it. And do we really want to be the ones that are doing that? I don't want it. I have an excellent relationship with the Premier, excellent relationship with the Cabinet. I don't want to have this debate over whether or not Police Services Act is appropriate or not. That's their decision. We live within that act and we've been doing a fine job up until now. So I would strongly suggest that it's probably appropriate that bodies that are having personality issues sit down over coffee and for God's sake, work it out. We're a professional council. It's a professional Police Services Board. Enough is enough. I don't want this played out in the press and certainly don't want it brought to Cabinet. So I can't support it the way it is. I'd rather we sit down and have these dialogues and discussions in a professional, respectful way and fix what's here that's an issue that we have that no one else in Ontario has.
Thanks councillor. I have councillor Jackson, Partridge, Waithead and Morella for a second time.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Before I offer some comments, just if I could ask the mover, under his therefore be it resolved, A, Roman numeral two, could I just suggest amending the language where it says comprised entirely of city councillors? I think maybe the mover meant members of city council, if I could offer that. And later on, it says a combination of councillors and citizens, again, members of council, Mr Mayor. So just at the appropriate time, I could amend that language. Thank you, and thanks to the mover. Mr Mayor, I'm, when councillor Morella drafted this resolution and sent it out probably a few weeks ago now for some initial feedback, I responded in quite an elaborate email in saying that I was of two minds. I cannot deny the fact, Mr Mayor, that in the past, from about 1997 up to about 2004, and then with a return for one more year due to an extraordinary circumstance, I was a very proud member of Hamilton Police Services Board, appointed by past councils. So I know the privilege it was to serve on that board and the privilege it must be for the current seven members, that six members that are currently on there and the new one that is going to begin shortly. So I cannot deny the fact that I enjoyed my time on the Police Services Board. It was an honour to be there. And I've always, Mr Mayor, as much as I could, I've supported the hybrids of boards and agencies and commissions that have a mix of citizens and politicians on there locally. Look around, we have a library board, Conservation Authority, Waterfront Trust, City Housing Hamilton, seniors advisory, youth advisory, police, many of us are on a variety of those agencies, boards and commissions, and we serve with citizens, so they're hybrids. And oftentimes, I like the hybrids and I think they can work well and effectively. Understanding that if the city of Hamilton is the funder and/or the majority funder of the operation and/or capital expenditures, I think there needs to be that respectfulness that at the end of the day, reports are brought back to city council and council reserves the right to say yea or nay on how it's operating. And that's one of the difficulties at this time that we've had with the Police Services Board, again, that I served on before. So what, I don't know is if 2013 and this past budget deliberation, Mr Mayor, was an aberration in terms of the unfortunate conflict that we had with regards to the budget presentation by the board, by the majority of the board and the chief in terms of what was being requested, or not. I'm not sure. And I also find it a bit of a paradox, Mr Mayor, that our two other departments of emergency services, fire department and the paramedics, all come under complete control of the city council and a standing committee. And I've always found it a bit odd and quirky that the Police Department under the Police Services Act, respectful of that, has not been under, completely under the municipal umbrella, reporting up through a standing committee like fire and paramedics are. Actually, I would see greater synergies potentially with police as well hypothetically, possibly reporting up through a standing committee of council. Because let's face it, Mr Mayor, at the end of the day, regardless of what the boards do that we serve on, at the end of the day, especially if dollars are involved, you know that the emails and phone calls and faxes ultimately land on our laps, and we're the ones every four years accountable with our report cards to the public. And lastly, Mr Mayor, AMO. I'm glad AMO's brought into this equation because I don't know what AMO's feeling, I don't know what other municipalities are feeling. Are other municipalities feeling some concerns about runaway policing costs overall? Have they gone through experiences of their budgets that we've been through the last year or two as well? So, Mr Mayor, in summary, being of two minds, I'm supporting this motion here tonight because I want to begin a discussion. This motion begins a discussion, it asks the Premier for a comment, it asks the Minister of Correctional Services for a comment back, what do you think of our resolution, area MPPs, AMO? And keeping in mind again, two of our three emergency departments do report entirely up through standing committees and city council under the current format and structure. So, Mr Mayor, if for no other reason this is important to begin this discussion, was 2013 an aberration? I don't know. I'm respectful of our police service, I love our police service, especially the frontline men and women that serve and serve so capably well, but I think the discussion is timely and appropriate, and that's why I'm supporting that here tonight, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I have councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, and I do have a couple of questions. They're more on, I think directed towards Janice in legal, if I could, through you, sir. At the top of page two, in the first paragraph there, where it talks about alternatively, city council could support a model where the Police Service Board is comprised exclusively of members of council. The second part is where my question comes in, or alternatively, some combination of councillors and citizens appointed by city council, as is in the case of several cities in Canada. And the ones listed are outside of Ontario. So my question through you, Mr Mayor, to Janice, Janice, do we have that capability
Through the mayor, no. Under the Police Services Act in Ontario, there is not that authority for council to appoint any greater than the one member of the public.
So just to clarify, through you, Mr Mayor, just to clarify then, so we do appoint three members of council, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And we do appoint one member?
One citizen.
One citizen?
One citizen member, yes.
All right, so that's it, under the Ontario, province of Ontario Police Act, that's all that we're capable of doing. So my next question, that leads to my next question then, in order to change the Police Act, what would the process be through the province? Councillor Clark touched on a couple of the components of it, but I want to make sure I understand that if we did support this and approve it, what would the process be to achieve what it is we want to achieve? Through you, Mr Mayor, to Janice.
Through the mayor, the process would be, well, it would require an amendment to legislation, either to the existing Police Services Act or potentially, you know, a piece of legislation that's freestanding, so special legislation, if you will. It would require legislative change from the province.
But just to make sure I understand then, to clarify, so this special piece of legislation that could happen, would that be similar to the Toronto Act, but it would be specific for Hamilton?
Through the mayor, the province has in the past put, you know, enacted special legislation for municipalities on other matters, not necessarily something of a governance nature, but it may be in the form of special legislation for just Hamilton, or it could potentially be special legislation for all municipalities, although I would think if that were the case, it would then be an amendment to the Police Services Act. The Police Services Act sets out how Police Services Boards are constituted in Ontario based on the population, so that would require either an amendment to that legislation or special legislation to allow Hamilton or other municipalities to do something different than is in that legislation.
Okay, thank you. And through you, Mr Deputy Mayor then, does it anywhere in this resolution as it sits right now, where it says therefore be it resolved, does it include any language around requesting the special legislation specific to Hamilton?
Councillor?
Through the deputy mayor, the, under A, therefore be it resolved, it is resolved that the province of Ontario be requested to amend the municipal Act and/or the Police Services Act and/or enact special legislation. Although it doesn't specifically identify Hamilton, that would be something that presumably the province would turn its mind to, how it wished to pursue this if it did intend to pursue it.
Would it be your recommendation, through you Deputy Mayor, that be an amendment, a friendly amendment, that we put Hamilton in there to be more focused on what it is we're trying to accomplish if this is supported here today?
Through the deputy mayor, I'm not sure that I would have a recommendation in that regard. I think that this is something that if the province, in my view, if the province were prepared to contemplate moving in this direction, it might well be prepared to contemplate moving in this direction for more than just Hamilton. If it is, you know, I think the question is whether or not the province would be prepared to move in this direction or not. And if so, I would think that it would be prepared to consider this direction for other municipalities as well. It's a bigger question. That would be my view.
Thank you, I understand. So through you Deputy Mayor, is there anything, does the Toronto Act address those issues? Because Toronto does have specific legislation on a number of fronts.
Through the deputy mayor, I don't believe that there's anything in the city of Toronto Act that specifically references this. I think the city of Toronto is dealt with under the Police Services Act, as are all Ontario municipalities in this regard.
All right, thank you, thank you. And I guess through you Deputy Mayor, my question, I'm not sure whether I could direct it to our esteemed colleague who is with President, as President of AMO, but I'm just wondering if I could Deputy Mayor, if this is something that AMO is currently looking at on any level, if you could provide some help.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Powers?
The answer is no. Our discussions with the Minister of Community Safety and Correctional Services is related to the provision of police services through the OPP at the current time. There has been, this would be the first overture made by any municipality in Ontario for consideration of changes to the municipal Act or the Police Services Act to allow the independence of it. So I checked into that before tonight's meeting.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Partridge?
And thank you. And only my last comment. And thank you. And only my last comment, and again, this may be a friendly amendment to this, would be that we circulate it to other municipalities, to the large city mayor's caucus of similar size to Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead is next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or Deputy Mayor. The government often, and has on occasion, reviewed governance. We wouldn't be amalgamated city if they hadn't reviewed governance. So from that perspective, and I heard comments that, you know, how will we know policing? Well, I think the Act is pretty clear. We're not asking a lot of the elements in the Act to be changed. So as far as day-to-day operations of policing, that's a decision of the chief. What this is about is starting a dialogue. Let's start a dialogue about whether we should be reviewing the current governance model. And what I like about this motion, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is this motion also opens the door in saying, look, if we don't have line-by-line opportunities, and we don't have the control or accountability in the context of how dollars are being spent because it's a third party making the decision, then take it. Take it and do the same thing as the school board. So no longer we have to go to the doors and be accountable for the high taxes that people are paying when a huge, one of the largest contributors to those taxes is police services. Police services went from $80 million pre-2000, pre-amalgamation, to over $140 million today. It's one of the largest and fastest-growing tax increases on our budget. And so when we indicate that, well, you know, was it Conservation Authority, you know, they have this body too, well, two things. Conservation Authority deals with watershed that is larger than just Hamilton's, so it's pretty difficult to, in that model, to make it work. But two, it's not the largest tax impact in the city of Hamilton. Police services is one of them. When you look at communities across Ontario, I can tell you that there are communities that 50% of their overall budget currently is going to policing. We've grown since 2008 by 20.3%, while city budget grew by 13%. So it's eroding our ability and our capacity in this community to deliver quality services. So obviously, there needs to be some accountability on the finance side. And no, we're not experts on policing. No one's asking us to. And I'll tell you something, either any of the board members is sitting around that table, experts on policing. So that's a wash. The issue is, is this governance model working? This particular motion starts a dialogue, an important dialogue. I want to be clear that I'm getting phone calls from police services around Ontario, from elected officials. They say it's time because of the uncontrolled financial impacts those communities are seeing year in and year out. It's a national discussion, FCM, and I know Counselor DeVal can attest to that, and certainly, and I know AMO can attest to the fact, that it is a very significant issue in the province of Ontario. So back to my quote, thank you, Maria Pearson, insanity, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting different results. But guess what? Maybe it's time, Albert Einstein, thank you, maybe it's time that we review the governance, start the dialogue, because that's all this motion's doing, start the dialogue, let's get into what might be a better governing model, and ensure that there's accountability in this process, whether it's out of the city completely, or whether it's more in control of the city in regards to the financial implications. So I think it's timely, and it's not timely because of anything else other than this is the rising pressure on taxpayers across the province of Ontario, and Hamilton's no exception. And we can't afford to continue going down this road, doing the same thing. Thank you.
Counselor McCady?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I guess, like Counselor Jackson, I'm of two minds on this subject. I only have three terms of counsel to draw from in terms of my own personal experience, looking at police budgets, 10 years of that period of time. And I, you know, I guess the major concern I have is this issue of independence. And I reflect on Counselor Clark's comments in that respect, and I think of the Board of Health. Several years ago, public health in Ontario was, went through a bit of a crisis period, where the several health units voted in favor of cutting budgets and taking drastic action, as compared to following the recommendations of the Medical Officer of Health, which was obviously in favor of public health directions. And they, in fact, put the citizens of those areas at risk as a result of their decision. And the Province of Ontario had to step in to govern those particular health units. That led to a province-wide review of how public health is administered across the province. And we, in fact, changed our model to the current one we have. And we had a recent discussion here at the Board of Health, Mr. Mayor, led by Dr. Richardson, where we looked at the model and just to make sure it's still functioning, because it's important in issues like health, like public, that the Medical Officer of Health is able to operate to the best interest of the citizens of Hamilton, in our case, citizens of Ontario and other jurisdictions across the province, and needs to operate with some level of independence when it comes to a very important issue like public health. I think what concerns me is the timing of this motion. Again, I only have the three terms, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the experience, but Counselor Clark indicated that, in fact, we had higher tax increases under other police chiefs, other years, and we didn't take this step, asking for a governance review or asking for an amendment to the Municipal Act, to look at the language here, which I'd like to touch on in a moment. So that makes me a little bit nervous about the approach we're taking here and the timing of this. I too, like Counselor Clark, would like to have, focus in on the relationship between the current Chief of Police and this City Council, following the budget discussion we had, and to deal with that directly, rather than take an approach here. And I mentioned the language. It really doesn't start a dialogue. It's very definitive that it requests the Province of Ontario amend the Municipal Act and/or the Police Services Act or enact special legislation to enable changes here in Hamilton. So if it was, if the motion talked about requesting the Province of Ontario review the governance, issues that currently exist across the province, or currently exist in Hamilton, I suppose, specifically as it applies to police service boards and the dynamics with city councils, including the cost issues that we're, that we've been concerned with this particular budget we've just gone through, you know, I'd be more comfortable with that, and I could support that kind of a motion that talks about a review of the governance method across Ontario with, you know, specific items noted that we'd ask the province to review and to engage with the City of Hamilton and other large cities that have independent police services, perhaps relating to the OPP, if that makes sense, in terms of the AMO direction that Counselor Powers has talked about. So I'm just nervous about the independence issue, and Counselor Clark raised the issue of Conservation Authorities. And, you know, I'm probably going out on a bit of a limb here, but I've only been Chair of the Hamilton Conservation Authority for close to two years. And I think it's probably fair to say that we need a more substantive increase in our Hamilton Conservation Authority budget than 0%. We need a higher increase based on the number of issues we're dealing with. Mr. Mayor, we're dealing with climate change, we're dealing with additional flooding issues that we're all aware of right across the city, particularly in the east end of the city, and we're doing some work with this city on that right now as a Conservation Authority. We feel it's important to acquire, continue to acquire natural areas and wetlands and manage those wetlands to improve things here in Hamilton, to increase the conservation areas and the trail options here in the city. And of course, we deal with a lot of development issues with the Conservation Authority as well, that we have to spend staff time on. So I think if we really sat down and looked at the increase we needed, it's probably 2%, 3%, 4%, 5%, particularly given the 0% we've come in at the last, in the last three or four years. So the Conservation Authority is not that independent. It's, the majority of board members are city councillors, and I think reflect the view of City Council and the budget interests of City Council. So I think that's a bit of a tricky example if we were to look to that. And this independence question is one that comes up, you know, a number of ways, whether it's the Board of Health, the Conservation Authority, or the Police Services Board, the subject of the discussion tonight. So just a bit nervous about the approach here, and I'd much prefer the mover to consider language around asking the province to review the governance model that we have in the Province of Ontario, or specifically, as it's affecting Hamilton right now, we could certainly reference our own municipality that we have concerns about. But I'd rather take that approach and also encourage, I don't know how to do it, Mr. Mayor, we'll need to work with you, to really start engaging directly with the Police Services Board and the Police Chief to reopen, talk about our relationship and talk about what happened during the budget process and how we can repair that relationship. So I'm having a hard time supporting this motion tonight unless we, the language is more about entering into a discussion, as has been talked about before, you know, asking for a review of governance, rather than a direct request to amend the Municipal Act to change how the Hamilton Police Services Board is governed. Thanks.
Do I have Counselor Pearson? No, on that point. Counselor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate allowing the conversation to go on. I too have to concur with a couple of my previous speakers that I'm really split on this, and I'm going to just take it down to the nuts and bolts of it, is that we all recall that the Chief at budget deliberations brought in the budget and his concerns addressing the needs going forward as far as growth and development. We sat here tonight and dealt with Scooby. 15,000 people potentially. There's going to be need for officers, officers, equipment, vehicles, stations, the whole works. And I'm really concerned. I'm not qualified. I'm not experienced. And I really wonder if this became a council committee, like Board of Health, that we would even chant, saying, no, it can't happen. We all know as far as Stony Creek, I'm lucky if we have one officer, if not two, at the off times from Strathern East, and we know that very well, and the officers know we know that, and they do their darndest to serve our community. But believe me, if I had to sit there as a representative on the Police Services Board, as a council rep, you're wearing two hats, but you have to remember the huge requirement of safety in this community at all times. And I would never take that power and determination that the Chief has to have in his pocket to address these issues. And I don't know that changing the government's model is going to do that. There's three provincial reps, that's all there is, that are appointed by the province. We have council representation. We have citizen representation. So I'm concerned saying, and hopefully, in all honesty, all of the representatives have received some training to assist them in the decisions that are made around that table, especially, obviously, the provincial representatives were appointed because they must have some experience. And I'm not going to name names, but they must have some experience and some understanding of the ways and the way to deal with these issues and address these concerns. They're not doing them haphazardly. And I don't believe that they're saying, well, the Chief's just going to make all the decisions. You sit on the board, along with other council colleagues. So I really, I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here torn also, because I know that if it became all of us as councils, Board of Health, and I don't think we've ever said to Dr. Richardson, no, sorry, you're going to close this area of service, and we've tried to address that. And you've got to remember, funding is also different on the Board of Health level than it is on the policing level. So we have to factor all of that in. And right now, with this motion, I feel very uncomfortable even saying to the province, we're questioning this. And this is the first year the Chief really rocked the boat, but he's done a commendable job. I have not received complaints. If I said to you, I had, I'm going to guesstimate off the top of my head, a half a dozen calls from residents saying, no, tell him no, tell him not to, that he doesn't get the increase, he doesn't get the officers. That's it. I represent close to 30,000 residents in Ward Ten alone. So I'm really questioning, do we need to go down this road right now, and is it just a matter of sitting around the table and saying, where are we going to be? And that's what the Chief has to determine, interpreting the growth and official plans that we're putting in place, that he has to meet. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, or Mr. Mayor, sorry.
And now for a second time, I have Counselor Marula, and then Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to clarify, this is all about a review. We don't have the legislative authority to impose anything. Frankly, this is all about requesting a review. We don't have the legislative authority to impose anything, as you know, because we are a creature of the province, and that is basically the fundamental problem that we're experiencing because of that. So just to rehash what the problem is, this is not about taking control or a power grab. The option here, too, is to divest ourselves from the act of operation as school board. So, and I understand that 50% of our budget, we have no control over, and there are those of us who are apologizing for that. I'm not going to apologize for that. The system is broken. When you can't control a line-by-line scenario, and it's not about taking control of the operation, it's about taking control of the budget. So, and Counselor Clark, God bless him, he was part of the MyCare's government that imposed the downloading, and I understand that he apologizes for that. And now he's apologizing for the police board as well and the legislation associated with that. And that's your prerogative. But we're suffering as a city because of those pieces of legislation. So I implore you, to you, Mr. Mayor, to be part of a solution. Don't make apologies for legislation he supported previously and now apologizing for it, because your residents deserve more. 50% of the operating, 50% of their taxes, Mr. Mayor, is related to legislation he supported when he was at Greens Park, and now he's apologizing for it when he's at City Hall. So I really, I implore everyone to look at this. We're not asking to take total control. What we're asking for is a review. So along what Counselor McCady suggested, that is the intent of this motion. It is to really put up the red flags and say, we have a problem. It's been acknowledged by AMO. Counselor Powers, who's the President, has concurred with my concerns and that, whose support was before us today. Counselor DeVal and his FCM counterparts concur with the problem and what's being presented here today. Counselor Powers has stated that to me personally, and he concurred publicly out loud when Counselor Partridge referenced it. So it is an issue. To deny it is putting your head in the sand and avoiding it. And again, it's nothing to do with the Chief. It has everything to do with the governance. This started before any of those other issues occurred, and it was all about the downloading and being held accountable and telling, and being honest to our residents to say, yes, we are sending this tax bill to you, but just so you know, half of it has nothing to do with us. All of you just want to continue. If you're not going to support us, continue to, I think we need to change that. And you know what? If that means divesting ourselves, so be it. That's an option. But I'm no longer going to play the charade to suggest that we're taxing people for a service we have control over, because we don't. So if you want unelected and basically unaccountable people controlling the services, the police services, and it's the largest budgetary alignment of the city, so be it. Then that's part of the whole Senate scenario in Ottawa, unaccountable, unelected.
Counselor, you're covering the whole ground.
So in essence, the bottom, I'm sorry, what did you want to drop?
Just in the interest of time, we, I think we.
In the interest of time, I'm making, now you've just taken 10 seconds away from me, but I'll add that to the final. So the bottom line is this, we could either ask for total control, or we can divest ourselves. But primarily, what's before us, because we don't have the authority to change it, we're asking for a review that should be conducted province-wide and nationwide, which has been at support of AMO. at the support of AMO and at the support of the FCM. So at the end of the day, put aside the personalities, put aside any peripheral issues, and stand up for your residents and be part of a solution rather than making apologies for the problem. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Pesuda for a first time.
Thank you, Mayor Bettina. We pulled up today Part III, the Municipal Police Services Boards here, and I'm listening to discussions here. And with, and I don't want to belabor this, we're going on here, but seven-member boards in circum circumstances, excuse me, and under this act exceeding, population exceeding three hundred thousand, we usually have seven people in the board. We do have seven people on our board. We talked about an imbalance. We have the head of municipal council, which could be the mayor, or the mayor, if he chooses not to be a member of the board, may, the council may appoint by resolution of council another member of council, plus two members of council, so that's three, from Hamilton City Council, the mayor and two councillors. One person appointed by resolution of council who is neither a member of council nor a city employee. That is the public person that would be appointed. That person applies for the position and goes through the selection committee, who, selection committee are members of council, correct? So now we have three members of council and one privately independent person appointed. That's four by council. And then we have three others who are appointed through the province by Lieutenant Governor and Council. It's a 1997 act. Okay, so I don't totally see an imbalance here. We have, we have the mayor and we have two councillors who are responsible to the people who have been elected by people of Hamilton, the taxpayers. Okay? I'm good with that. The question here is, when we get down farther down, and we get to thirty point one, and talks about responsibilities of boards, and then A is appointment of members of municipal police force. Establish policies for effective management of police force. Generally determine after consultation with the chief of police, objectives, priorities with respect to police services municipality. Direct the chief of police and monitor his or her performance. That's the responsibility of the board. And it goes on, there's from A to J. In what we're looking for here through this motion and moving forward, with the potential, should this ever come back, the council has control over the police services, are we looking at following through on all these responsibilities? Excuse me, including direct to chief of police and monitor his or her performance? That's a question I'm throwing out there. I don't know who, that's just a question in general, but it's my comments from some of the stuff I've picked up here, and I'm torn between what I'm going to do with this one too when we come to vote, but it's just some stuff I researched and I did a whole lot more research, but I'm not going to belabor this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have Councillor Clark for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my time on this council, I've noticed a pattern with certain member from Ward Four that every time certain members oppose what he's putting forth, there's this outrage of infantile partisan prattle that has absolutely nothing to do with the debate, so we won't bother going through that, and its facts are usually misrepresented to the nth degree. For example, the member did say, "Mr. Mayor," that Councillor Powers supported what, he was saying that AMO was in favor of this. What Councillor Powers indicated is they're reviewing governance of the OPP, and that we would be the first municipality in Ontario that has brought forth any request for this type of review. That's not what we heard from the member for Ward Four just a few minutes ago. So it's important that you really listen to what is being said. I congratulate Councillor Pesuda for having the initiative to pick up the Police Services Act and read it, because the Police Services Act has been around a long time, and it was developed to give municipalities control. You have three councillors and an appointed member that you appoint, four-three. Council always has control of the Police Services Board. That's why there's no other people around the province who are crying about the Police Services Board, or the Police Services Act, or about any change.
Don't call order to order, it's not called order to police.
And with respect to the member for Ward Eight, it would be wonderful if when time to time he says again, and all the emails and letters and phone calls, start presenting names, because we're a little bit tired of listening to, "Oh, I'm getting all these calls." Give us names so we can talk to these people, because I'm not getting the calls. I got people telling me to say, "What are you doing contemplating having the council take over the Police Services Board?" What is wrong with the Act the way it's written currently? Someone tell me where one clause in the Act is not working, because it is working, it has been working for twenty years. If it isn't working, then the members on this council who sat on the Police Services Board for all those years would have brought up concerns about it. You had control, four-three. Every vote, four-three, every vote, four-three. You had control. Still have control, four-three. So it's about relationships, it's about personalities, it's not about the Act, and I really, I am so concerned that we're going to throw this up to the province to premier win and say that we want her to amend the municipal act and/or the Police Services Act to enact special regulation legislation because we can't get along in Hamilton with the police chief. Because that's what it's coming down to. So get over ourselves, start working together to resolve the issues, and start going to the province for every problem that we can't fix on our own. The Act is fine, there's no problem with the Act. And I really, I'm tired of debating partisan issues at a council level. We're supposed to be here for the city of Hamilton. This has worked here for decades, for decades. Worked with Chief Mullin, worked with Chief Robertson. Go back. Where was the issues? Where was the proposals for amendment? Some of you have been on the council fifteen, twenty years. Now all of a sudden, we're not comfortable that we have four-three on the board, and so we have to throw in the towel and say the Act needs to be changed, we want all the members to be members of the council. I can't go down that road. And I just cannot listen to the nonsense that continues to perpetrate under certain people.
First time speaker. Go ahead, Speaker. Thank you. There are two parts to the issue of the police board, and the police board mandated to provide adequate and effective police service. The cost which AMO and FCM are working on is the compensation, and that's another piece of the job. But the Police Service Board, I feel in all honesty, has to accept that their decision on policing is directed to adequate and effective policing. And if there were some frivolous issues that were, I mean, I think a few years ago we had this thing with the orthotics, where the orthotics bill for the shoes was in the And so we would rightly, I think, on the Police Services Board, try to detect things that really don't play towards adequate and effective policing. So that's the one issue that the board is for. The other one, eighty-five percent of the budget is compensation, and that's the stumbling block that even the chiefs, chiefs of police across Ontario are confronted with. I'm afraid that's all I will say or should say at this time, but I'll take the chair back, and I have no further speakers. I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, you do, I had Councillor Marula and then Councillor Whitehead.
Just clearly, just on a point of partisanship, I'm not sure why I, Councillor Clark's being offended by the fact that I highlighted the fact he was part of Mike Harris's government that introduced the downloading issue, which twenty percent of people are paying residential taxes right now are directly related. So how that's considered partisan and not factual is really concerning. Not to mention that he ran for Stephen Harper in the federal government, he's the one that being partisan. He stood for nomination and ran for Harper, he was, he was lapdog for Mike Harris, and I'm calling him for it. So there's a difference between being partisan and exposing someone for who they are, and he's part of the problem, and I'm asking him, "Be part of the solution." And I'm not here to give you help along those lines. It's my vision, your time.
Thank you. Point of privilege, okay. Councillor Whitehead.
It's a point of privilege, and for the record, and Councillor Marula knows this, Mr. Mayor, I was elected in 1999, I did not participate in any of the votes of downloading, there was no downloading from the province of Ontario from 1999 on. As a matter of fact, I was responsible personally for changing the ambulance agreement that uploaded the ambulance from the hundred percent down.
Bring the answer. I'll see if you're part of the...
Okay, I'm going to, as the chair, I have the floor.
You're part of the problem. Be part of the solution.
The facts are that we uploaded the ambulance fifty-fifty as a result of my negotiations when I was there.
Twenty percent.
And as a result of even the Ministry of Transportation.
Twenty percent.
We uploaded, go transit. See, member for Ward Four, ladies and gentlemen, does not want to hear the facts and does not want to share the facts. He still continues to be upset that he lost the nomination, this one agreed to fulfill. So as a result of, as a result of...
This part of the discussion is over. You have anything to contribute to this, Mr. Councillor Whitehead?
People ask why now, and they ask you why now, and discussion, and I mean, we talk about naming names. I've heard a bunch of friends, the cabinet mentioned so, but I didn't hear any names. So I mean, I don't want to play that game. Well, I wanted to build the issue. The issue is the taxes in this community need to be under control. The issue is that the police budget is almost doubled in the last twelve, thirteen years, and the issue is it's going faster than all other budgets, and it's not just in Hamilton, but it's happening across the province of Ontario. That's about it. That's about it. Now, we talked about reviewing governance, Mr. Chair, the province did that with municipalities. We could argue that it was the model that we had, the existing, the malfeasance was working, but obviously the province of Ontario decided that it was better governance model that context of the challenges in Hamilton, and they malfeasance. So when I look at, and when we talk about the board makeup, and God bless the council for doing the research, let's be clear, the four of the members are automatically under legislation appointed to the board. They're not selected by council.
Three.
No.
Three.
Four.
Three.
The mayor is there, a matter of the legislation, the Police Services Act automatically, he's not selected council. The three, the three, well, that's, is it not? I have the guy. But he's not selected by council, let's be clear. Councillor, second, second, the three members, the three members are funded by the province.
I have a motion to call a question. I have a second here.
I have the floor.
I have the floor and the chair. I have a second to call a question. All in favor of calling a question? All in favor of calling a question? Chair, thank you. Standing record is over on Councillor Marula's motion.
Mr. Mayor, just by the amendment, just to the language, it's members of council, please. That's the bill.
That's right, so it's all council, and it also is asking you to report it, you can...
Sorry, it's not what Jackson would use.
Mr. Mayor, I remember at the beginning, about an hour ago, I just said, just to make sure you clean up, instead of city councillors, I just said it'd be members of council if it's appropriate.
Okay, so on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, Chair. All right, on the main motion, all in favor. Standing record is over.
Councillors Whitehead, De Waal, Jackson, Collins, Marula, Farr, Ferguson, and Shaw.
And those both, standing.
Mayor Bettina, Councillor McCadie, Pearson, Johnson, Pesuda, and Clark.
And so the motion passes, thank you very much. And now we would have noticed that Councillor Whitehead, you wish to introduce your motion respecting, fulfilling the promise of home care.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I believe I wish to waive the rules, because it is timely. So a little by myself, thanks to Councillor De Waal, the rule is already waived, the law allows the introduction of motions respecting, fulfilling the promise of home care. Questionable, the tightness of the, my understanding, Mr. Chair, that the voids of the province of Ontario, the name of the cross of Ontario, the timeline to accomplish that, I think within the next month or two, they won't be in the ministry. So they want to have the prescription passed for the law. So a waive of the rule, don't they?
You have a comment on this?
Just for shame of reasons, I don't know why I said this, but my in-laws are doing home care, and I may be in conflict, a result of, I know this affects the general population, but I want to put another, I think I'm just going to bring the discussion of voting, I just want to say.
All in favor, Chair. And on the motion.
Okay, please, Mr. Mayor, a little by myself, thanks to Councillor De Waal, and a lot aware of that is, basically, it's just a commitment to home care, ensuring the province of Ontario provides the appropriate resources, but I want to note that Councillor, I met them at West End Mall originally, we had sub-scoot meeting, Councillor Jackson, who's good enough to come, Councillor De Waal, and it is clear that there's a campaign to make sure that home care is a plus on the provincial agenda, and clearly the concern that Councillor Jackson, myself, and De Waal, that is any motion we would consider, we want to make it clear that it can't come at the expense of the municipality, if the province has to step up late financially, that is contained in the motion. So the motion is pretty clear, it's a much better statement than I was, I hope you can support that.
Before we carry on, could I introduce our Minister Ted McMeagan, who has joined us? Captain Ted, your cable getting pulled on, it's great to have you here tonight. Thank you so much. Thanks so much. All right, now, demolition of City Motor Hotel, Councillor Marula, your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's moved by myself, actually, the notice motion before us, but I believe I need to waive the rules, so I'll introduce the notice motion, and I waive the rule seconded by Councillor Collins.
All in favor of waiving the rule for the board? Go ahead.
And it's moved by myself, seconded by Councillor Collins, and it's before you with respect to the demolition of City Motor Hotel with the Ward Four reserve account being identified.
All in favor.
Chair.
You have a question?
Yeah, just a question, I was curious to note through you to Councillor Marula, why, I know there's a time thing about three weeks to put it up for public tender. Demolition contracts are all over the map, depending on who's looking for what salvageable materials. In the case of the ream plant, we were all pleasantly surprised when the low bidder actually gave us a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar credit and took the building away. And if you go sole-source something, they're not likely to build those type of credits. So it'd be nice if we still put it through a public procurement process and rather than sole-source it, just to make sure we're getting...
In an ideal world, I agree with you, but the problem is with the liability issues surrounding the site and the process, staff has advised me according to the motions before us, and if it's not, and I believe, through you, Mr. Mayor, I believe the ream property was sole-sourced, it was not RFP. So if I can get clarification on that through you?
Well, I think you may have support on your motion anyway, Councillor, so all is in favor. I need, I'm sorry, you're not in favor?
Oh, sorry. There wasn't, there was an example that they gave me. Chris? Chris Murray.
Do you want us to address that?
Yeah, we don't want to shut it down.
Okay, Councillor, you have your motion before us, the councillor's brought up the issue of maybe getting a better deal on demolition.
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chris. Chris, can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. Rome is here because similar to what happened in the West End property, the demolition associated there, Rome was involved. So Rome can answer, I think, the questions.
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The ream property, we did go through a formal tender process. The amounts of metal and steel in that property were quite extensive, and hence the reasoning of the salvage cost and the benefit to the city of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, if I recall. With regards to the motor motel, based on my experience and based on the experience and number of demolitions we've done in the city, I don't anticipate the salvage cost there. It's straight material, concrete and so forth, so I wouldn't anticipate salvage cost at that property.
Yeah, there'd be a few girders and so, but no rebar. Okay.
Yeah, so my apologies, I misunderstood what they told me. The reason why they wanted to sole-source it was to prevent the problems that occurred at the ream property. So as a direct result, that's what was communicated to me last night about squatters and stealing and so on, there was a lot of, so through you, Mr. Mayor, could someone elaborate on that component versus the ream property? Well, actually, we don't need to.
Well, let's, let's go to, I think you're going to get your...
Okay, I just want it to be open and transparent, that's why we're doing this.
Second.
Okay. All right, so...
All in favor of the demolition motion? Any opposed? Thank you. Plurfluoro octane sulfonate, I practice that all day. Councillor Johnson, do you wish to introduce your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to waive the rules I have moved by myself and seconded by Councillor McCadie, that the rules of order be waived to allow the introduction of this motion respecting the Ministry of the Environment comments on the risk assessment pertaining to PFOS contamination.
On the waiving of the motion, all in favor.
Chair.
Thank you. I don't know if everyone is aware of this, but on May the twenty-seventh, we had an airport implementation meeting, we were having a struggle keeping quorum. The staff at that time asked us to put this into a motion form for them, so it'll be a... easier for them to obtain the instructions. So the first point is that the Ministry of the Environment Standards Branch be requested to respond to the City of Hamilton with their comments on the risk assessment pertaining to PFOS contamination by June 30th, 2013. If we let the process work right now, then those minutes from the airport implementation meeting now goes to GIC on June the 19th. By the time it's ratified by council, it gives MOE four days. Now we're giving them a little bit more time. That the, the second point is the Ministry of the Environment be requested to test and determine the source of mercury pollution in Lake Niupenko. And this is another issue that we have right now, that we're finding mercury in there. When I asked the staff, is it possible that we got the PFOS from the airport, could we in fact got the airport or the mercury? And the response back was, it could be from agricultural. So this was the same sort of response I got back when I was asking about the PFOS. So we really want to nail those two down. The community's been waiting for over a year now for the results of the risk assessment to find out how we're remediating, what we're going to do. And we just keep getting told that it's, it's going to come back, it's going to come back. So we're basically asking the branch officers to come forward and give us their comments to council by June the 30th. Thank you.
And the second there is?
And our second is councillor McCaddy.
Right, and all in favor?
Chair.
Thank you. Temporary appointment of the Police Services Board, councillor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motions before us, and as a result of the vacancy that we're all aware of, this motion is moved by myself and seconded by councillor Collins.
To waive the rules?
Oh, sorry, motion to waive the rules.
All in favor of waiving the rules? Go ahead.
So moved by myself, seconded by councillor Collins, that we have a temporary appointment to the Police Services Board, and it's before you.
All in favor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I W, okay, sorry. Councillor, it's been a long evening. And we appoint councillor Lloyd Ferguson as the appointee.
Okay.
So I'm looking for some comment from our legal staff, because the way the Police Services Act is written, we don't have the authority to appoint temporarily. We have to wait until the outcome of OCAP before there's any decision, and it's in the hands of the Police Services Board.
Do you have a response for that?
So through the mayor, the, the Legislation Act makes provision for council or governing body that has the ability to appoint, to also appoint temporarily to fill vacancies for absences or inability to act. Under the Police Services Board regulation, councillor Whitehead is required not to participate or he's unable to act. And therefore, our reading of the Legislation Act, section 77, makes clear provision for council to appoint. There is no requirement under the Police Services Act or regulation that council must appoint for a particular period of time. There's a maximum period of time for appointments, but no minimum period of time. And there is a past practice in Hamilton of making temporary appointments, I believe in 2006, where there was a member of council who was unable to act due to absence, in that instance, I believe it was due to illness. So the, that's basically what is proposed in this motion.
So to be clear, because my understanding was that in the event of a suspension pending an investigation, that OCAP makes the final call on the reappointment to the position, and that the position just kind of hangs there until they make up their mind. And you're reading the section indicating that that's not the case?
Through the mayor, my, our reading of the act is that the commission has, at this point, initiated review, which has the effect of effectively taking councillor Whitehead out of any ability to participate. And that council has, it does not initiate the commission's, or engage the commission's ability to look at appointments, which the commission can do if it drops below quorum, but it certainly would seem to engage section 77 of the Legislation Act, where council has the right, if you will, to have a certain number of members on that Police Services Board. And so in that case, it appears to engage section 77 of the Legislation Act to support council making a temporary appointment for that interim period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All, councillor Jackson?
Mr. Mayor, can I just offer the real life example, back in '06, when very sadly councillor Murray Ferguson took his stroke, was going to be off indefinitely, members of council for that last year, Mr. Mayor, asked me to fill in the last year of that appointment, and it was just because he was incapable of carrying on to fulfill the term. And so there's a real life example from some kind of a precedent standpoint, if that helps members of council. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Whitehead, did you want to be clear?
Yeah, I think I should. I mean, I don't know if I have one, but perception is reality, so I prefer to declare conflict on this particular motion.
And so, on the motion.
Chair.
Chair, thank you. Members of council, do you have any brief statements? Do you have a notice of motion?
Yes, I talked to a few councillors today, I'm getting a number of calls. So basically, we looked, actually, the notice of motion, Mr. Mayor, is to have, and it'll have to go back to Public Works, to look at whether or not we can open up our splashpads two weeks early, so that's mid-June. Apparently, we looked at it for a month early, four weeks early, which was 64,000. I believe two weeks is 30,000. There are apparently four pads open now, and of course, I've been getting calls on why and where those four are.
Just the notice.
So I want to waive the notice, and just ask to go back to Pub Works to consider and bring a report back on opening the pads.
Right, fine, okay.
For two weeks.
Great. Thanks for your statement. And councillor Duval? No, I won't. Chair, you wanted to respond to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is a report that was prepared last year. It was presented during the budget as an enhancement. So all the information was there, and council turned down the enhancement. So it would just be resurrecting existing council enhancement, if that's the wish of council.
So how should we bring this forward?
Mr. Mayor, I just received an email from our great clerk, Mary Gallagher, indicating that they'll be opening on June 24th. So it is a little bit earlier than we traditionally do. I think that'll do for now, so I appreciate.
Thank you. Any brief statements for members? Councillor Duval?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and just a couple, I have a grand opening of a splashpad that I'll be holding on Saturday, June the 22nd, at Jerome Park.
Please, it's timing and everything. Ask me what the secret of good comedy is, timing.
Okay, I got it now. Anyways, we'll be holding it up in the community there from, starting at 11 o'clock at Jerome, which is on Opera Wellington and Tower Crest. And we'll be cutting the ribbon, having some little small child hitting the button for the first time in that community. It's a four-year plan, Mr. Mayor, that the city has been building this park, and they've done a great job. And so we'll have a three-hour event with some hot dogs and hamburgs going out there.
Great, thank you.
Again, that's Saturday, June the 22nd. And another one, we'll be holding a special announcement at Sackville this Saturday, 11:30, basically thanking our federal government and the city for the amount of money we have for the expansion of Sackville, which is about 1.2 million. And I think it'll be MP David Sweet will be there, MP Chris Charlton, myself, councillor Jackson, and possibly even somebody from the province, maybe Minister McMakin, I'm not sure. But anybody wants to come out, it's a great announcement, and it's been waiting for a long time for all these expansions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councillor Jackson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Two quick announcements regarding a couple of tenants' meetings coming up quickly. City Housing Hamilton, at the Macassa Apartments, between number 68 and number 90 Macassa Avenue, right beside Macassa Lodge, the cluster of city-owned housing Hamilton apartments. On Thursday, June 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00, there'll be a barbecue there for the tenants. It's like an AGM, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank Kim Moore and Dave Chambers, our property manager and our community relations officer, for helping me coordinate that on Thursday, June 20th, from 2:00 to 4:00, 68 to number 90 Macassa Avenue. And secondly, Mr. Mayor, the intersection of Upper Gage and Mohawk is becoming increasingly dangerous. We very, very sadly and tragically lost a dear senior from 801 Upper Gage, who was hit at that intersection and passed away recently, Vivian Webb. Mr. Mayor, councillor Duval and I are putting more pressure upon both police for greater enforcement and traffic department, because, Mr. Mayor, the pedestrian countdown signals, and it's a candidate, a top candidate, the intersection for installation of a red light camera. This request has been in for months. Traffic staff, Martin White, are working diligently on it, there's some paperwork involved. So I'm letting the residents of 801 Upper Gage, 877 Upper Gage, and 666 Mohawk Road East know that over the next month, there'll be a town hall meeting at 801 Upper Gage to simply discuss the traffic and the safety issues at the intersection of Upper Gage-Mohawk. I'm very much aware of it. It's not abandoned, not forgotten, and we're going to have a meeting to hopefully get some resolution to the dangerous ways especially cars are speeding through that intersection. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Collins, councillor Marula?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of councillor Morelli, he wanted me to basically highlight two events, the first being the Barton Village BIA is hosting their inaugural real estate crawl tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for anyone who is interested in renting or buying properties within Barton Village. The host location is at 413 Barton Street East. Number two, the Keith Neighborhood Hub is hosting its annual community fun day on Saturday, June 22nd, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the North Central Park. And with respect to my area, June 25th, I'm having my quarterly community meeting at Parkdale Arena at 7:00 p.m., and I look forward to those attending. Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor.
We could organize one of those things, you know, where you get to smash the wall of the City Motor Hotel. A little fundraiser? Okay, councillor Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This weekend, the Grand Durand Garden Party goes, it's the third installment there in the beautiful Durand neighborhood. Art crawl Friday the 14th, Royal Hamilton Yacht Club, 125th anniversary blessing and parade of sale this weekend as well. And the tourism folks with Tourism Hamilton at the Lister Block for a marathon, 12 hours, with a salute to tourism, lots of prizes and games and so forth. Gore Park's Summer Promenade is on, started last Wednesday and throughout the summer, Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays. Next weekend, the 7th Annual Beasley Summer Barbecue is going at Beasley Park, it's always a fun event. Open Streets goes on Sunday. Dish Crawl International on June 25th at 7:00 p.m. The Tall Ships, don't forget, folks, at the end of the month, June 28th and 30th, down at the beautiful waterfront, that's going to be an amazing event. Community Living is hosting the 6th Annual Johnny Murphy Memorial Golf Tournament on the 22nd, that's at the Bado, featuring Cardiac Hill, I forget the number of that one. July 1st, the candidate celebrations return to Bayfront and Pier Four Parks. There's free music in the village, starting Wednesdays and Fridays throughout the summer, July and August, at Ferguson Station in the heart of International Village. Happy second retirement to, you can get all the details on everything I just mentioned, by the way, at jasonfarr.com on the calendar. Happy second retirement to Glenn White, the guy who's exceeded expectations, I think we can all agree, with respect to the work he's done in such a short time, really, with property standards issues throughout the city of Hamilton. He's going to have a little party, I think, tomorrow afternoon here at City Hall. And finally, councillor Ferguson, the barricades are officially down at King and Hess, on King. There you go, thank you.
Councillor McCaddy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, a couple of items. First off, the Strathcona neighborhood has developed an interesting approach. We're always looking for more food to be donated to our food banks, and they're establishing a Strathcona food drop-off center. It's occurring at Midas Muffler, known as Midas Auto Expert Services, at 440 York Boulevard. And Midas has agreed to accept donations using a system that allows people to drop off 24/7 food for our food banks in Hamilton. And we're having an opening of that establishment, the food drop-off center in Strathcona, on Saturday, June 15th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, again at Midas at 440 York Boulevard. So I'd like to thank the Strathcona Community Council for putting that together, it's an innovative approach. Number two, Mr. Mayor, the Westale Village BIA is sponsoring a pancake breakfast for fathers and their families on Sunday, Sunday morning, starting around 10 o'clock in the morning. And that's a great event, there was a ton of people there last year. I think there was a fire about halfway through last year that made it kind of interesting. I don't know if they've scheduled that for again this year, hopefully not. But that's Sunday morning, Westale Village, great work by the Westale Village BIA. And lastly, Mr. Mayor, I think a really important thing, citywide Hamilton issue. I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate the Hamilton Arts and Letters Magazine. The Hamilton Arts and Letters Magazine is celebrating its fifth anniversary here in Hamilton, and it's a distinction of being the first online magazine funded by the government of Ontario. And it also receives $20,000 from the Ontario Arts Council. They authorized the Hamilton Arts and Letters Magazine to distribute that money in grants to creative people across Hamilton, artists, writers, poets across Hamilton. And that amount may be increasing, because the province of Ontario is so happy and excited by the Hamilton Arts and Letters Magazine and the work that they're doing in the city. They've had governor generals, award winners writing in the magazine, Giller Prize nominees, Canadian Poetry Association members writing in the magazines. So it's tremendously significant, not only here in Hamilton, Mr. Mayor, but right across the country. And internationally, it's being picked up as well, and it's being noted in Canadian embassies and that sort of thing, happening right here in Hamilton. So please join me, city council, in saluting Hamilton Arts and Letters Magazine on their fifth anniversary, and support them to, I think, to become one of the top magazines in Canada. Finish, Mayor, by saying special thanks to Paul Leeson and Fiona Kinsella, who are the driving forces behind the magazine, are the editors, chief bottle washers, they do almost everything, raise money for the magazine, and really the driving force to keep it going. So a huge organization right here in Hamilton, that's being recognized across the country. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm just going to touch on a great event that we successfully hit out of the ballpark, as far as the Battlefield Weekend. Four days, from May 30th to June the 2nd, I had the honor of representing councillor Clark, who had other things that he was predisposed in dealing with, and a pleasure with the family. But it was an honor to be there with yourself and councillor Johnson on the Friday event. And just going to mention that Battlefield reenactment is actually, has been going on 32 years. It is the longest standing reenactment event in Ontario. And there were over 700 reenactors and families who attended that weekend, over a million dollars in costumes, artifacts, antiques, their tents, everything that they bring to use for the whole weekend. I mean, it is phenomenal when people think about it. And the reenactors come from as far as, this year, they're from as far as Winnipeg, Ohio, Indiana, Michigan, Kentucky, Texas, and England. And I had the honor of, as I was walking around, I had the pleasure of chatting with numerous visitors, and I know we had a visitor that I was quite surprised, from as far away as Russia. So I had a great chat with him, and he was talking about the similarities between the battle, the War of 1812, 1813, and the Napoleonic War in Russia. And I said, well, isn't that interesting? Because we are, Stony Creek Battlefield House and Monument is twinned with Borodino, Russia.
Yes.
For that very, very reason. So it was an enlightening conversation that we had. I also had chats with residents from London, Windsor, Guelph, Brantford, Niagara, and Toronto, just the few that I was able to talk to and say, you know, what brought them there, and they were very thrilled. And there were a number of residents, number of visitors, that were actually going from all the reenactments from Niagara around. So it was very, very interesting. And, Mr. Mayor, there were 14, we anticipate, I just got counts today, 14,000 is the approximate amount of visitors on the four-day weekend, which is, they're anticipating is over double what we normally get. There were 1,700 students alone on Thursday, and when we were at the rededication of the monument on Friday, there were 600 students that were in attendance. And these were all, these were students not just from Hamilton, but from as far as Mississauga, Kitchener, so they're all coming from outside of the area, which is great, because these are young people learning their history. And it's great to see. people learning their history, and it's great to see that. Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to also ask, mention that on the Saturday night, I wasn't able to make the fireworks. Well, first, we have to mention Friday night did get rained out. You were there, Mr. Mayor. We left there drenched cats, and it was very unfortunate, because it would have been a splendid event dedication of the Smiths' Noel, and I'm hoping that we may see something come forward in the future. So with that, on the Saturday night, there was the last, the reenactment on the Saturday night, which is the primary enactment. At that event, I was told that ladies went out in period costume with fifty-one lanterns that were taken around the field, and as the soldier's name was called out, the lanterns represented a soldier that died in this battle, as the lantern, as the name was called out, the candle was extinguished. And they said that not only did the crowd, there was hush over the crowd, but they all stood. And that was, that would have been very impressive. And then at the end of all that, with the fireworks, there was the last one that had two-hundredth anniversary banner lit across the sky. So to staff, and I guess I'm going to state that to Sue Ramsay and Ian Kerr-Wilson, absolutely, absolutely phenomenal job. If anyone who attended any bit of that event over the weekend, they would know how much time and effort went into coordinating this, and kudos to them, they did a stupendous job. Then now, Mr. Mayor, as a member on Canada Flag Day Committee, I've been able to bring the banner that you can see out in the atrium, we will be having the Regency Picnic at Battlefield Park, and this is where Canada Flag Day has teamed up with Battlefield House in the last year, this year, and next year, because of the battle reenactment, this being around the significant time period. We've teamed up to have a Regency Picnic in the park. It's going to be held this year on Sunday, July twenty-first, from eleven to four P.M. It is free, and it is sponsored by Canada Flag Day and Battlefield House Museum and Park, and hoping lots of people come out. We had a good event last year, we probably figured we had over four or five hundred visitors for our first event, so we thought that was really good. But there will be Benbrook Little Theatre Productions, there'll be Regency Hat contests, Regency Period dancers, wandering minstrels, games for kids, big and small, and musket demonstrations, and I'm hoping many people come out and enjoy it. Last year, fortunately, the rain held off till just about closing time, so we lucked out. And I did want to mention, Mr. Mayor, because I know emails have been going back and forth, we were honored with a letter, actually Anna Bradford was honored with a letter, from the British High Commissioner in Ottawa, Brigadier Barry Legris, who was in attendance at the event on Friday. And if you'd allow me indulgence, I'd like to read it. He did handwrite this letter, and I think it's pretty impressive that we got that, that Anna got it. It says, "It was a privilege to represent the British High Commission at your anniversary and memorial events last Friday. I was immensely impressed by the Battlefield Park and all going on there. Hamilton should be very proud of this unique asset. It was a pity the storm disturbed the evening, but everyone kept smiling. Please pass on my thanks to all who hosted, and I was certainly extremely well looked after and left felt amongst the best of friends. Best wishes for the remainder of your ambitious program. Barry Legris." So that's great. I thought that should be read into the record, Mr. Mayor, it's very impressive. And after all that, one person out there I'm going to say hello to, hi Judy. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Johnson?
Thank you. I just wanted to wish my son a happy thirtieth birthday tomorrow. And I don't know if the other son over here, councillor Pesuda, just turned sixty, so this is going to be interesting, we ever get these two together. So happy birthday, councillor Pesuda. This weekend, Hamilton Airshow, folks, get your tickets, come out and support it. We're actually getting the Mosquito out, and we have the Lancaster up, and it's the first time, there's only one mosquito in the entire North America. So it's going up with the Lancaster, and I believe the last time those two were in the air together was about eleven years ago, and Lancaster took its maiden voyage. So that's this weekend, here's Father's Day for you. Starting this Saturday, continuing through until September, Benbrook Farmers Market, Saturdays from eight to twelve at the Benbrook Fairgrounds. Tuesday, June the twenty-fifth, I'm hosting a recreation meeting to talk about programs for the Benbrook Village, and that's at the Glanbrook Municipal Centre. An hour before that, I'm having people come in to look at the Trinity Church Traffic Calming Meeting. So that'll be at the same location. On July the third, the four-H are holding a Safety Night from seven to nine, and it's free, and it's at the Benbrook Society Grounds. And also, on the nineteenth of Friday, Winona Peachball, it's coming up so soon. So we're having that, and the next day, the Benbrook Conservation Authority is having the Big Screen Movie Night. Madagascar is showing, and it's, gates are open at eight fifteen, the movie starts at nine, and it's only seven dollars a car, and all the proceeds go to the Glanbrook Home Support. So thank you very much. And one last thing about the eighteen twelve events, it was amazing, it was a bucket list item, and I don't think we could have done nine tenths of it without all the volunteers involved. It was just incredible. So thank you.
Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, very briefly, we're in the time of festivals, and we had our Heritage Days event this last weekend, it was a huge success, and it started out on Saturday with the parade at ten o'clock, and councillor McCatty would appreciate this fact, I didn't go down in a car, I didn't go down on a bicycle, I didn't drive in a trolley, I rode a horse, right back to the old days, and rode a horse the full length of the parade, and it didn't throw me off.
Knowing you, it was a high horse, right?
I know.
Did he get off his hind horse?
Well, the kids loved it, they went and peddled it and so on, but it was a lot of fun. And they had the soapbox derby, which Bill Kelly and I hosted together. Bill lives in Ancaster, so the committee conked him to be the announcer and myself, and there was nineteen entries, all kids built these soapboxes, or I think the grandparents did, and they went ripping down Wilson Street right from the library, which was, and it was just, it was packed six deep on both sides watching this. And then we went on to open our spray pad, ahead of councillor Whitehead's, but we opened our spray pad on Saturday.
Jerry and David know about this?
Half the cost was paid for by the Rotary Club of Ancaster, and the money's all been collected, and the bills have all been paid. Public Works scared me a bit, they didn't really finish until less than twenty-four hours before it opened. But I do want to recognize Public Works, they did a great job in the finished product. Did in fact hit the schedule, I was a little ornery about the schedule thing, but they stayed on and got it done. But last Wednesday also, my office was visited by Mary Bosma, who wanted to donate something on behalf of her son, or get some kind of memorial for him. And so we found out that he loved good water fights, and so we already had a slab of pork, but what a great place to put a bench on our spray pad in memory of Tim Bosma. So during the spray pad opening, Charlene, his wife, was there, and his parents, Hank and Mary Bosma, and they unveiled this bench, and I think Jerry's left, but I called the Public Works Department Wednesday afternoon before four-thirty, see if they could get us a bench by Saturday morning, and they moved heaven and earth. Thursday morning at nine o'clock, it was installed. And I think the whole community, not just Ancaster, all the city's been touched by this Bosma affair, and anybody, anytime anybody can do something, they just move heaven and earth. And that was very much appreciated by the family and by the community. So in the absence, maybe Chris, you can let the Public Works Department, Craig Murdock, know that we really appreciated that and their ability to deliver on that. And they did a wonderful design, the master plan. And anyhow, I always get a little touchy on the Bosma thing, it was something that's pretty tough to go through. On a brighter note, the Ancaster Senior Achievement Centre, the contract's been awarded, it's under budget, and we're doing the sod turning ceremony at nine thirty on Saturday morning. I think Ted, I think you're coming to that as a major contributor, and I think, I know David Sweet's coming also, so nine thirty Saturday morning, we're going to do the sod turning ceremony for that expansion, get underway and be finished by the end of March twenty-fourteen. That's all I got.
Good. Thank you, councillor Pesuda.
Thank you, Mayor Bertina. And councillor Ferguson failed to mention the rib judging we had at the Ancaster Fairgrounds on Sunday, and there's some pictures out there on Facebook, and it shows, it shows some messy faces and a lot of props there, and we didn't drink out of those things, okay? There's a lot of props. But you cannot drink and drive, and as a representative, you're not supposed to have a drink. We actually had water in the cans. Going on here, the Dufferin Quarry, Flambrow Quarry on Brock Road's having an open house on June the fifteenth, on Saturday, the formal presentation will be eleven o'clock. The Golden Horseshoe Ride for Dad is going to be on Saturday, pre-registration is on Friday night from thirty till nine, and that's going to be the Valley Park Community Centre, and I don't know if I'm interfering, councillor Clark's, if he's going to bring this up, but registration is there, and it's nine seventy Paramount Drive. The ride is on Saturday, the registration on Saturday will be from seven to eight thirty, and there's breakfast there too, and the ride's going to leave at nine o'clock, so that's, proceeds go to fight prostate cancer, so that's the Ride for Dad. We have, Enbridge is going to have an open house. Enbridge is the pipeline, the company that transfers the oil. They decide to have an open house, and we're having one at, they are having one, I'm not having it, at the Rockton Fairgrounds on June the twentieth, starting at five P.M., and I'm planning on being there for the duration of that, that night. The Rockton Lions are having a fish fry on June the twenty-second at four thirty at the Rockton Fairgrounds. It's a fundraiser, Lions give a lot to the community, sightseeing, the dogs, icing dogs, goes towards that. And I guess the farming thing out there, the asparagus is coming pretty well gone, local stuff, rhubarb is out there, peas are on their way pretty soon, local strawberries are starting to show up, and everybody's having splash pads and that, we need the water to shut off in the rural areas. We've had so much rain, a lot of things are behind, can't get our crops sprayed, I haven't got my soybeans in, only a bit of it, it just does not shut off, so hoping for a few dry days. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. And councillor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the first thing I want to mention is congratulations to FORCE, our Friends of Rural Communities and the Environment. On June second, we had the community celebration, the picnic, out at Carlisle Golf and Country Club on behalf of the challenge against the Saint Mary's Quarry. We won, it was a wonderful celebration. Ted was there, we certainly got to enjoy lots of cake and lots of dinner, and there was close to six hundred residents from the Carlisle and surrounding area that turned out. And there was awards handed out, which I thought were a wonderful touch. The former councillor, Margaret McCarthy, she was recognized, she came, and as well as Mulberry from Milton, she was there as well, and very instrumental in the fight over the years. So it was wonderful, and Ted, very, very great comments that you said, and the community appreciated it. Later that same week, FORCE was again recognized as recipients of the Environmentalist of the Year Award, which was a fantastic event. Unfortunately, I had a public meeting that night, so I wasn't able to attend, but I just think it's a tremendous recognition of the nine years that FORCE and the community dedicated to fighting that quarry. We won, and it is going down in history, and it's not going to be forgotten, it's carrying on as best practices, if you will. The second thing I want to just talk briefly about is this past Saturday, we had Wild on Water Down, which saw about two hundred to two hundred and fifty volunteers in the community come together. We had lovely service at Memorial Park, all the pastors were there, and then everybody just fanned out across Water Down and Flambrow and did, you know, helped out organizations. As an example, at Memorial Hall in our downtown, we had about fifteen residents who had purchased flowers, they tore apart all the garden beds, they planted all the flowers, they cleaned it up, and this went on all day long around Water Down and throughout Flambrow, and it was really quite wonderful, and it was finished off with everybody coming together for a barbecue and to watch a movie in the park, so it was terrific. Tomorrow at ten A.M., I'm hosting a seniors' safety symposium at the Water Down Legion, and it's being put on with our new seniors' advisory committee that is set up a couple of months ago, and this is their first event, and we're really looking forward to it. Friday night, Flambrow Relay for Life, the Relay for Life events are happening throughout the area, and we're very pleased to see the one at Flambrow. This is the seventh year that they're having it, a wonderful turnout, and it's right at Memorial Park in downtown Water Down, so it starts at seven P.M., goes till seven A.M., and still not too late for anybody to join in. And then on Saturday at eleven A.M. sharp, the Carlisle Optimists will have their duck dash up at Courtcliff Park, and twenty-five hundred yellow rubber duckies will be dumped into Grindstone Creek, and the Optimists will jump in with their hip waders, and the first twelve ducks down the river and through the finish gate will be awarded to the people who have bought them, and it's over three thousand dollars in prizes. So it's quite a significant event. We get a couple of hundred people out to watch, and free hot dogs, there's wagon rides, it's really, it's a great community event. And the Carlisle Optimists, of course, similar to the Lions and other service clubs, they raise about thirty thousand dollars a year, which they then in turn donate back to organizations in the community that need it. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I was the emcee at the environmental awards when Graham Flint and all the gang got their awards, it was a terrific night. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank yourself and councillor Pearson for stepping up into the role as hosts for the Battlefield Weekend. The wedding of my daughter was awesome, but I still missed the Battlefield event, it was phenomenal. Drove by on Sunday, talking to some of the volunteers, it was a record year for attendance, also a record year for volunteers, and I don't think people really appreciate how the Battlefield Weekend works, because we really only have one or two staff that are actually involved in Battlefield Park throughout the year, and it's actually all volunteers. So we had close to a thousand volunteers on that weekend managing the event, and it's one of the most spectacular, it's an award winner across the province. So we have to thank the volunteers, because without their efforts, we could not pull this off. If you try to imagine the costs in trying to run that event with paid staff, it's just absolutely impossible. It reminds me much of Westfield Heritage Village, which I guess is in councillor Pesuda's ward, and the Conservation Authority does the managing on it, and there's one staff, but almost four hundred and fifty, five hundred volunteers that are actually running this event. And many events throughout the year, I went to the Christmas event one year, and it was actually like stepping back in time. So those are two areas where I really appreciate the efforts of the volunteers, we couldn't do it without them. Thank you so much for stepping in, both councillor Pearson and Mr. Mayor. I do want to let the residents know, and my community know, that on June third, I learned from Newalta, the landfill company, that they're planning on increasing the size of the landfill as opposed to finishing the approved width of the landfill. The landfill was approved for a certain size and a certain height above the grade, instead of completing the next two cells, which would have been a larger width of it, they're decided to go up two and a half stories. A little bit disappointing for myself and for our planning staff, given the fact that we're putting in upwards of seven thousand homes in that area, and some folks in Penny Lanes have already purchased their house and moved in under the knowledge that the C of A was already approved, and here's what the plan was. So out of nowhere, the company has decided to increase it approximately two and a half stories. The CLC, the Community Liaison Committee, still doesn't know how to deal with this, it was kind of sprung on them. They're meeting July the eighth at six thirty at the Newalta landfill office. The company, I asked the company to hold public meetings on the proposal, they have refused, they're doing it all by the internet, their website, the Newalta website. But I will let you know that the CLC committee meets at six thirty July the eighth, it's a Monday, at the landfill office on Green Mountain Road, and those meetings are always public. So if the company is not interested in holding a public meeting to explain this to the residents who are buying all these houses, the residents should know that they could always come to the CLC meeting, because they are public meetings. Now, mind you, it's a small office, so I'm not sure exactly what's going to happen, but I am a little bit frustrated by this, and we will be doing what we can to make sure that all the residents in the area know exactly what's going on. Once again, at six thirty P.M., July the eighth, Monday, on Green Mountain Road, there's only the one office there, it's a Newalta-Tony Creek landfill office. On a brighter note, on a very, Mr. Murray's been talking a lot about changing the culture for our staff, I got an email from a resident who, Tim Gallagher, he told me, I could mention his name, he was walking his dog around eight A.M. through Optimist Park, and there'd been a lot of runoff in the stream, and he noticed that there was a dam that had been built in the stream. So he saw a city truck picking up trash from the various cans in the park, went over and told them about the dam, he figured they'd be phoning it in and letting someone know. He was quite surprised to see fifteen minutes later that the dam was gone. The guy just went over and cleared the dam and acknowledged, and knew that this was going to be a problem, and fixed it. And that's what we're talking about, that culture where you see something that's wrong as opposed to calling it in and have someone else do it, you're there, you might as well do it while you're there. I was thrilled getting the email, I told Mr. Gallagher what we've been talking about in terms of changing the culture around here, and in his words, he would give a pat on the back. the back, whoever did it, it's well deserved, that he could have easily just passed it along to someone else to fix it, and we would have had a large flood in the park, so. I thank Mr. Gallagher for sending me the email, and I'm sure somehow we'll figure out who it was and make sure we pat him on the back, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I might as well lead off with splash pads. Swanger Park is under development, my understanding is it'll be up and running by June twenty-four, so we will have our grand opening in the next number of weeks, and I want to thank staff for all their efforts on that. And I also want to, I'm going to make an announcement in regards to this weekend, a movie night at Gorley Park. Before I do that, it's great when you, and I think Counselor Clark just touched on, but it was great when you hear from the community about the outstanding work of some of our frontline workers, and I just got an email from my staff that indicated they had a number of calls from the organizers of this movie night, and they want to thank directly through staff, maybe through a letter, George Green in Tennessee for their great involvement in insisting and facilitating the Gorley Park movie night. So that movie night is this Saturday, May fifteen, this event will be sponsored by Kitchen and Bath Classics and Wolseley Company, Gorley Park Community Association and myself. There will be a number of city departments, as well as a petting zoo, and many fun activities for the children. We're asking for non-perishable food items for neighbor to neighbor, festivities start at five-thirty, movie will be chosen by the children, it will begin at dusk. Bring your lawn chairs, blankets, sleeping bags for the adventure in the park, and I will be setting up a booth, Mr. Mayor, there, and I look forward to meeting many of the great residents of Gorley Park.
Thank you, and seeing no further speakers. I just, I know it's getting late, I'll be attending the retirement of the principal at Queen Victoria Elementary School, Joanne McIntosh. It's the time of the year when there'd be many, many teachers and principals who are arriving at the end of their careers, and it's quite emotional for them. I know, I'm married to a retired teacher, and so I want to congratulate Joanne directly, and all of those who gave their careers to the uplifting of our children. Often in controversial times, it's not always easy to be a teacher, to be a principal, but so much great work is quietly done in the classrooms of our city, and so I want to acknowledge those teachers who are at that point in their lives. And now, members of council, I need a motion to move in a closed session pursuant to subsection eight point one B of the city's procedural bylaw. And, private confidential, I can't tell you. Section two thirty-nine-two B of the municipal act, as the subject matters pertain to personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees, ten point one, personal matter about identifiable individuals, may have a motion to go into camera. Pearson, Johnson, all in favor? Those who are not required, please leave the chamber. We received information about a personnel matter, and no direction was required, and so now, Counselor Clark, I need a motion to amend the bill list by adding a new number one-six-seven and renumbering the balance.
Thank you, moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Brenda Johnson, the bill list for June twelfth, two thousand thirteen, a member meeting of council by amended by adding the following as bill one-sixty-seven attached hereto and renumbering the balance, one-sixty-seven to provide an emergency management program, and one-sixty-eight to confirm the proceedings of city council.
All in favor?
Carrie.
Counselor Clark, may I have a motion, please, and the bill is amended?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Scott DeVal, that bills number thirteen-one-fifty-one to thirteen-one-sixty-eight be passed as amended, and the corporate seal be affixed thereto, and the bylaws be numbered and signed by the mayor and the city clerk to read as hollows.
Discussion of bills one-fifty-one, one-fifty-two, one-fifty-three, one-fifty-four, one-fifty-five, one-fifty-six, one-fifty-seven, one-fifty-eight, one-fifty-nine, one-sixty, one-sixty, one, two, one-sixty-three, one-sixty-four, one-sixty-five, one-sixty-seven, and one-sixty-eight. Let's go over those once again. No, that's fine. May I have a motion, please, with Jaren, Pearson, Johnson, all in favor, Carrie, thank you.